To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, morning.
Morning, Marty.
Okay, we'll start off with the approval of agendas and the additions or corrections and deletions.
I don't have anything.
I make a motion to approve today's agenda as presented.
I'll second that. Okay, again, motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, we'll go to the minutes of last Monday's board meeting. And is there any additions or corrections there?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second that motion.
I got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of last Monday's meeting. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, with that, we'll start out. The first item of business on the agenda today is the CADC Housing Needs Assessment Fund.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
I did bring with me copies of both what was handed out when our consultant visited, as well as abbreviated version of the proposal that our committee took a look at. So, you know, as was discussed, for the, I believe all of you were able to attend tonight, but, you know, what we talked about was kind of the why for CADC, why we feel like housing development and really taking a look at our current housing stock is, is an important need for us right now. You know, we, as we talk about, one of our top priorities for the organization is business retention, expansion efforts. And constantly, there's discussion about employment shortages. And, you know, watching the statistics that talk about our unemployment rates and things like that, you know, we, we feel like we've, we've watched that trend. We've kind of took and, taken a look at what we have available, you know, knowing the growth that's going on in surrounding counties as well. We know that within Carroll County, with the residents that we have, we're not able to meet that workforce need. And it's getting tougher and tougher for those commuting in because there is opportunity, you know, they, they do have the opportunity to go either direction. They can come to Carroll, but they can also go the other way because there is a lot of employment opportunity in the region right now, a lot of growth. So, that, that really led us to kind of take a look at what those pieces might be that, that are part of that equation. And, you know, as we've talked about, it is local wages, and I think that is the responsibility of employers, you know, we can talk about that, and I think the employers have taken a look at that themselves and, and trying to remedy those things within their organizations. It is childcare. It is education and healthcare, which we feel like are both doing very, very well here. And, you know, we feel like housing isn't going to just solve that problem for employment, but it is something that we can be proactive with and try to kind of take a look at those things that are identified as challenges when we have our employers trying to recruit workforce into the community. So, I do want to, I'll share with you guys a copy of the pieces of that proposal that kind of outline what is going to take place through the process of the housing needs assessment, and then, you know, what that budget is and how that breaks down. But today, we as CADC wanted to come and, and make a financial request of $10,000 to partner with us on the study. You know, we feel like beyond just the financial commitment, we want to partner with the county in terms of the process and identifying what those needs are and preparing for implementation, but also, we want the county to be an important partner moving forward. So whatever that outcome is, or whatever those strategies are outlined in this process, we want the county to very much be on board and partner with the city and CADC moving forward as we look at a long-term strategy for housing development in the county. You know, we're, we're fortunate to have the smaller communities in Carroll County that are also taking a look at housing, and they've implemented some of their own unique strategies in terms of lot preparation and, and things like that, and identifying areas for housing development. But, you know, we, we really feel like a real comprehensive look at the county as a whole for housing strategy is very important right now. So with that, I don't want to talk all morning. I want to open it up to any questions you guys may have. As was interviews last, I believe it was two weeks ago now already, we did, as a committee, decide to go with RDG Design, office in Omaha and Des Moines, a lot of experience with doing these types of projects, but also, you know, one of the things that really stood out to us is the commitment to long-term strategy. They were a company that community goes to over and over again. And so to us, that was a very good reference in itself to say that communities come back to them to update that study and, and move forward with what those next steps are. So, okay, with that, I do promise to go ahead and let you ask any questions you may have.
I guess the one comment I will make is when we met with Amy that night in the scope of this project, she said it would probably be about six months till we get results back on it. So it's a pretty good turnaround time, I thought.
We've applied for some grants, so it may bring down the cost. Several utilities and Realtors Association.
I'll get some information on that. Thanks, Jim. Any other questions or comments?
I tried Housing of Iowa, and no response.
We have three, we have three.
We have three, three potential funding sources. We did also take a look at a couple other utilities, and they do two to three a year, and the waitlist for similar types of projects is about 22 communities that are already ahead of us. So, odds aren't good that we'll seek that source. But, like I said, we do have three potential sources.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a real quick comment for the supervisors. I think it's real obvious that as we are going forward, there's an awful lot of changes coming at us. And it's, it's coming faster than what we're used to dealing with. And the only way that you can make quick responses is to, to know what it is that you're responding to and know in advance. Because every time one of these things comes up, if you've got to wait nine to six months or a year before you can make responses to these things as they change, you're, you're not going to be able to make those decisions quickly and efficiently. Because I'm on board with Marty out at the landfill, we have done a lot of assessments, and we've done this planning ahead, and we've done the life cycles. And that's the only way that you can make good, efficient plans and, and can make some of these decisions, which I feel has turned things around, and, and our landfill is looking much more resilient and solid than what it did just seven years ago. This is the same type of thing with this housing. Individual communities, you've got 62% of your population in Carroll County is these small rural communities. They are suffering, and if they suffer, so is the county seat. We need to learn what it is that we can do, or what efficiencies there are that we're overlooking at this point. Because we need to make sure that the dollars that we are spending is doing the most paying for our buck. So, I, as Manning, down on the corner, I would strongly encourage the board supervisors to consider this as a very worthwhile project that would probably return the dollars back in spades. There.
My two cents worth.
Thanks, Marty. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I just want to state that I think today we've reached a threshold of a certain type. I know we've each met individually with you or a member of the chamber, and then Amy, RDG, had a meeting where the city council was invited, and none of the supervisors were invited, and CADC was there, and we heard that meeting, and it was a... Today is the first day that we're having actually a real public meeting, not that these other things were closed to the public, but...
Absolutely.
The public wasn't, they wasn't invited. It was, it was kind of a small meeting, which was okay. I think we need to discuss things in private. I know when I have constituents, I like to speak with them in private so they feel comfortable, and that was the idea there. But today, we're bringing this out to the public, and I do hope we have more discussion here today. And I'm, I do really do not want to vote on this today because I think we need to vet this with the public a little bit and hear their comments. My feeling is, even though I've gotten a lot of information from a lot of people, I don't think anyone at this table has a monopoly and all the good ideas, and I want to hear some comments from the public as well before we vote on this issue, in case they have something that we missed or didn't thoroughly investigate.
And I do have one question. Housing costs in Carroll, Iowa in particular have been an issue because people think housing in Carroll is expensive. Some say it's market-driven, some say it's because of the amenities we have, et cetera, et cetera. How will a housing study affect the cost of housing in Carroll, Iowa, for example? That's a question I hear.
You know, I, I can't say that without seeing the results, but, I mean, obviously, with, with finding out what those needs are and identifying what the inventory is, if there is going to be future housing development, it may bring the market down or the asking price a little bit more, if there's more opportunity. You know, I, I can't say that for certain. The Realtors would be a good, or have a good indication of, you know, how many shoppers there really are versus what the inventory is. But again, that's something that it's kind of hard for me to just say right now what that answer would be.
And obviously, I'm directing the questions because you're standing up, but anyone who is willing to contribute, obviously.
My question to you, Neil, would be, are you hearing that it's going to drop the valuation or increase the valuation?
The question was I have is, how will this affect the cost of housing in our community, if at all?
It hasn't affected the cost?
Because I, I'm just a problem answered, problem perceived. Maybe it's a problem that our housing costs are relatively high in Carroll. I hear that anyhow, and, and solution, I'm not sure, but there's an idea that the housing study will help with the cost of housing. That's one of your primary...
Same, same problem.
That's a primary, a primary objective in their brochure was to make housing affordable. So, I, I just want to, it's to provide resident, prospective residents with places to live that provide their needs at costs they can't afford. So I'm asking how will a housing study affect the cost of housing?
Okay, well, the, as far as Manning, we hear those same types of things that you can't afford to come to Manning because it's cheaper in Manila, it's cheaper in Audubon, and the housing needs assessments that we did actually helped us to get, like, the 202 housing, which was low to moderate income for the elderly, specifically for that age group, that we, we, it showed that we had a need for those facilities. And that allowed us to go out and get a grant for that, to build that, because it would not be something that would be feasible for an individual to build on their own. So, it, it opened up some houses that were of the lower level, that we could then go to Region 12, get the low interest to rehab those, get starter homes for the young people. The older people could go to someplace that they could afford. So there's, I mean, some of the questions that you're asking don't, aren't going to have a set answer. They're going to be pretty wide open. But I, I can and I will still stand by the fact that we have done housing needs assessments in the past, and we support this, and as far as the city of Manning, we're not wanting you to field the whole brunt of this. We will put forth and financially go and, and assist with this, but we can't do the whole thing. I mean, obviously, we're, we're not a big enough entity to do the whole county, but we see the advantage to helping and supporting the communities that are around us, and what good can come from that.
I guess one comment I will make is, the scope of this project is for all the communities in Carroll County, not just Carroll.
Correct.
And I look at this as a way for a lot of these smaller communities, whether it be Elver, Brita, any of the communities in Carroll County. A lot of them can't afford to do these housing studies, and this is a way to help out a lot of those smaller communities.
Yeah, I agree with Marty on that. I spent a lot of time thinking about this, and not that Carroll's not important in this, but I think this is actually probably of a more benefit to the Coon Rapids and the Templetons, Britas. You know, I think they have, for the same reason, I think they have so much to gain by this. It's low cost. I asked Mike Schwab from Brita about this, and he said, "Well, we just did a development and housing needs assessment in 2012. This is it, right here. Number of local residents participating was 11. Housing improvements for low-income families within city limits work with Region 12 Council of Governments for Down Payment Assistance and Rehab Program." That's what Brita can afford. So, for me, this is, is very good. I mean, there's a community that has a lot of things going for it. It has industry, it has a golf course, it has a nice baseball field, a park, swimming pool. It has a lot of things that a lot, a lot of communities envy, but we can't get people to build there. And so, I think it's important, and I will make a motion to, to fund this without any reservations at all.
Well, and I will tell you that I think, I agree with everything Marty and Dean said. And I know, Neil, you probably want to wait on this, but I think we've, it's been discussed enough amongst a lot of us. And the other thing is, we've been elected to represent those people, and I think there's times we have to grab the bull by the horns. And I think the more we put this off, the more we're going to get, I think there's a strong enough need here, because we've had the comments made to us, and I think yous were sitting there, one said they were having trouble getting employees, they were looking at, they may have to look, look at somewhere else. I know some other communities have got a potential for some employments, kind of new businesses, or an expansion of their businesses that could create a lot of housing needs. And I'm, I'll just say, it's a Templeton right now. We're looking at that down there. This, the TADC has went out on their own and is trying to get people lined up to do spec homes down there because of this anticipation of this. We feel there are going to be some good jobs and stuff, but, you know, we don't have any houses on the market down there. I think the longer we procrastinate here, the worse it is. I think there's times, as my girls will say, it's time to pull our big girl panties on and vote. And, you know, I think, I look at this as an investment in the future. We all enjoy when we see the assessment come at budget time, when it's an increase in valuation, and we got to look at this as an investment for that, to sustain that taxable valuation we have. And I think there's times we have to do an investment in the community, and I will second Dean's motion.
I have a question. Everybody will agree that we have an employee shortage. Everybody, everybody is on the same page there. And, you know, Jeff, sorry to single you out, but you're the only person in this room that's on the HR Council, a very vibrant and active, you're still on the Council, I trust, HR Council. Where were they in this discussion? Because to my knowledge, they weren't questioned about this whatsoever. They represent all the major employers here in Carroll. And if, if this is truly about employment, why weren't they engaged in part of the stakeholders here?
You know, I guess I'll answer that in saying that we have, a lot of our major employers are on the CADC Board, who are included in initial discussion, as well as included in some one-on-one appointments and meetings. But in the past, too, as we've, as we've led to this process, we did talk a lot to HR people, more directly, one-on-one. We weren't an agenda item with the Council, but we have had a lot of one-on-one conversations with them. So, you know, we, we went with business leaders. We didn't pull all the HR people into the room at this point, but I feel like we have had some good conversation with them.
But Shannon, did they, did any of them indicate, with all of the myriad of challenges they've got filling these positions, did any of them indicate it's due to a housing shortage or need of a housing study?
I have had conversation, I, I know of four that I can name off quickly, that have had applicants come in, in some positions, or in some cases, they've been offered the position. Some were in management, or department management, and when they did not find a house, they declined the position, or they just didn't even accept the position in the first place because there was not adequate housing for them. So, yes, I definitely have some examples of that. I don't want to share it here, but I'd be happy to...
That's fine. It's just, it's just the first that I've heard of it.
Yep.
And, and I wasn't made aware of it. It was an afterthought following that meeting, or else I would have brought it up then.
Sure.
And I didn't ask, I didn't ask Amy, you know, the $64,000 question, how does housing relate to employment, because she's a housing specialist and not an employment specialist.
Absolutely.
And, and so, for me, you know, I'm kind of siding with Neil. This is the first time we've had any kind of public involvement with it whatsoever. And I would like to engage other stakeholders, and, and I have some thoughts as far, that I've shared only with Jim, on how to approach this thing sans a housing study. If a housing study needs to be, you know, part of it, then I would certainly encourage our developers and builders and financiers and things of that nature to certainly do that. That's their business. If they're going to go out and, and make these investments, they want to make sure that there's going to be a viable market.
Sure.
And, and fill those houses. And, you know, I, you know, one of the things that, that I would even suggest is, you know, before we go relying on taxpayer dollars to do this, that we perhaps at least consider, we, we've talked, I've talked to some CADC members about Western Iowa Advantage, whether that that's really truly paying us the dividends at which we're making the investments in. Is there any consideration to perhaps redirect some of those funds and form an employment consortium? An employment consortium, I think, that could involve a lot more people, you know, certainly outside of this room, elected officials or not, and, and really get aggressive in marketing Carroll, because we've got, we, we, the CADC focus for the last several years hasn't been to bring Google to town. It's been to support our existing employers, and our existing employers all have positions available. Would it not thus make sense, then, that we're not going to need 400 new homes, 200 new homes overnight, but incrementally over time and market Carroll and Carroll's employers, I say Carroll, Carroll County's employers aggressively, in that type of fashion, and would that not prove out to be a wiser investment?
Isn't this what they're going to come up with, is, is not just the housing, but maybe it's senior citizens living and all that kind of? It's not just about the housing. And when you talk about human resource people, Mark, think about who was at that meeting on Tuesday. Don't you think that Amy Ross talks to Dean and Paul?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And, and Pella was represented, and, and Dave Quont was there, John Ragman. I mean, I'm sure they talked to them.
Right.
So they represented the company. So, yeah, they weren't there, but they still were represented by the company.
I'm just saying, they're, they're the boots-on-the-ground time.
Well, but they, I'm sure there was a lot of communication back and forth, and Dean could tell you a lot more than I could, that's for sure. Think about who was at that meeting, and to me, what Manning says, you got to get started. They've been doing it for 15, 20 years, and we haven't done it yet. And I think we got to start looking at it.
We have, we have two neighboring communities that have had success with housing studies. Dennison is one. Evan Blate is head of their economic development group. I know Evan. They've got a 50-unit project getting started. It's been slow. He'll tell you that, I mean, because their study is, is a little dated, but it was part of their plan. We've seen Manning. And I'll back up Tom. You know, this, this is about employment, part of it, because employers are telling CADC leadership, these are our issues. This may not solve them, all of them. This is part of the recipe. But a study or an assessment will help us with age groups, maybe millennials want a different type of home. We might have a senior issue. So it's just not 100% business-related. Rising tide lifts all ships. Senior housing opens up other housing. So, it, we're hoping to hit all communities. Each one would have a different need, and it's, it's going to be part of the employment issue. It's not going to solve all of it. I'll be the first to admit that, but it's part of the solution. And I would go along and appreciate you taking us as the audience and appreciate your support of us.
I guess I look at this as, this is basically the beginning of where we're headed, and there's going to be multiple phases to this study. Until we do the study, we don't know where to go. And that, that's where I think we need this guidance to, to guide us, what we need to do in the future. Because I am a very strong believer of looking forward. It's not only for us. It's for our kids, for their kids, it's for future generations, and that's what we have to look at.
If I had a vote to take back that I made in this boardroom, it'd be one that I had made in haste. I'll tell you that right now. I told myself, I don't want to do that again. We heard from RD, RDG. They gave a very good presentation, and they were selling their services, obviously. They were all upbeat. I, I don't think they told any lies or anything like that, but that they had a service that, that they want your business. But I think it behooves us, as county supervisors, economic development is a big part of our charge, but representing the people, the public, is huge. That's what we're here to do. I would respectfully ask Dean to withdraw his motion if he wants my vote, and I'm not guaranteeing it after that, because I'm not going to vote for anything of this importance without public input. It's not in my job description. I'm a county supervisor. I represent the public. I don't represent myself. I haven't heard from the public. I've heard from a lot of very good people who are part of the public, but I feel we should have public discussion on this before we vote. I, I feel very strongly about that. I'm just going to tell you upfront, that I will not vote for this unless we have this issue discussed and vetted in the public.
I feel entirely the same way. And I've had a lot of conversation with several of you who I admire and respect and call my friends. I just haven't had much, it hadn't hit the paper. It hasn't hit the radio station. It hasn't hit Cat TV. I want to hear what people have to say about it. I really wasn't expecting to make a decision on it today. I understand now there's been a motion, and we, you know, are, you know, faced with, with acting. But from day one, I've approached this thing very openly, and, and, and I've engaged several of you with some fabulous dialogue. And I've learned some things from it. But so far, I am failing, not any of you, or not RDG, I am failing to make the connection between housing studies and employees. And I'm, I'm not saying that a housing study wouldn't have some benefit, but again, we have to weigh out whether or not it's a benefit that has a return on investment for our taxpayers. And as of 9:30 today, I haven't been convinced of that yet. And so for that, that's why I would, if the motion continues, is I'm just not prepared to yet.
You got to raise your hand high enough, Marty, we'll see it.
Okay. I'm sorry. I could sit and talk all day about, for my city administrator role, the people that I have seen not be able to move to town. Quakertown's a really good example. They had to close their overnight facilities because they couldn't get employees. Those employees called City Hall looking for housing. They didn't have it. They couldn't take the position. They couldn't take the job. The business closed that portion of their services. So I could talk all day about those examples. On a personal level, I moved back to Manning about a year ago, got a house only because I knew someone who knew someone who knew someone to buy a house that wasn't on the market. And I'm still in a house that I don't like, but looking for a better house, but they don't exist. We can't convince builders to build because our numbers are outdated, so they don't know what the need is today, but there are local builders that know there's a need, but they need to see the data in order to support that need to be able to build. So, just, you want to hear from personal experience and personal public. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I would like to see a housing needs done.
I guess I can't, I can't stand here and promise you that if we do this study, we're going to build this many homes, and they're going to be filled this quickly. But what we are faced with and what we look at is that unemployment number being low. We take a look at how many positions are open, and with workforce development, a couple weeks ago, that was nearly 200, just in Carroll County. And then we take a look at the homes that are available, given what our median income is. And that number has been steady at 25 at most. And so, the, I mean, that's the equation I'm looking at. You know, we hear of layoffs in other areas of Iowa, and we do have pretty intimate conversations about how do we market to reach out to those people? But responsibly, how do we go market to them and say, "Come to our community, but you're on your own," in terms of finding housing, because we can't accommodate that, or we don't have that available? That's a pretty tough sell. And, you know, as we do reach out, as Western Iowa Advantage, as we're out nationally recruiting, that, that's one thing that comes up more and more often. Labor went from about the number five criteria in the last five to eight years, up to number two, if not number one, in a lot of cases, including an RFP we got out of the state for 150 employees. But it's, it's pretty hard when we know that in terms of available households within Carroll, in Carroll County proper, I mean, honest to goodness, we'd be hard-pressed... I mean, honest to goodness, we'd be hard pressed to probably find 80 units available if we had to pull in 150 employees. So again, those are, those are my interpretations of it. Not scientific by any means, but, you know, those are the things that have led us to feel like housing is a part of the economic development equation and does relate to labor. As, as mentioned, I, I am not at all willing to put that out there in public meeting, but we do have a C A D C board member and manager of a local facility that would tell you they tried hiring a director in the neighborhood of six figures and that director could not find housing at the time and moved on, did not accept the position. So, you know, I, I do think it's absolutely production level workers, entry level workers, but it is on professional levels as well, that I feel like there is a concern with housing. So, um, like I said, I, I can't stand here and promise you that we're just going to fix it. And we'll have a utopian society in two years if we move forward with this study. But at the same time, I think we can find a lot of examples of communities that have taken the outcomes, taken the strategies, done what they feel like best fits their situation and have been able to increase valuation by the units being built and accommodate a need for employers through offering that, that housing piece. That is a huge part of decision-making when you're looking to move to a new community.
Shannon, and again, my intention isn't to turn this into any kind of debate. I want to make sure that I clarified. My statement has to do with housing and employment, not, not economic development. It has a huge component of economic development as we grow our taxable valuation. So, and, and we as Board of Supervisors are charged more so than anybody in this county with economic development.
Absolutely.
So you've got your greatest cheerleader sitting in this chair in terms of economic development. And as of right now, for improving our employment pool. So, I mean, I'm, I'll, I'll go to work for you. If someone wants to consider my plans, I'll go to work for you, starting at about noon today. But to me, I'm just having difficulty making that direct connection with, you know, with homes. So.
Just kind of a follow-up for you, Mark. Uh, as a Main Street community, one of the things that we have had driven into us is that the first place that you need to put your investment for all economic development is the businesses that you currently have existing in your community. Those are the ones that you need to really put your efforts into. The idea going with Iowa West and, and going after the Googles or whatever, uh, those are pretty much pipe dreams unless you've got healthy base at home. And right now, your healthy base at home has already been discussing of problems that they wanted. They want to expand. They want to do things. And when they cannot get their employees to come in because the employee walks into town and can't find a house. Manning would just love to have this housing needs assessment done. And we will do everything in our power to build all the houses that you guys need up here in this part of the county and help them to drive up here. Jefferson, they've got the problem and they're being proactive. They're not waiting around. They've even got plans to take buses, to bus employees in until they can get housing built. But as I said earlier, we don't have the time to sit and think about things like we used to. Because things are happening so fast out there. We've got to make decisions quickly and we need to have these studies and things done so that we've got this information. Or we're going to be sitting here another year down the road and we're still going to be asking some of the same questions. Well, we did all this other thinking and we got all this input, but we still don't have any information. And opinions don't make its decisions. It's facts.
Right.
And this is getting those facts so that you can then indeed make those decisions and make the opinion wise decisions, not the dollar foolish ones.
Right. And I had an employer come right to me and says, Mark, we've got to do something. Even he admitted, he goes, I don't know if this connects any dots. We have to do something rather than just sitting around and worrying about it. I agree.
You know, and follow-up on what he said, you know, we had a business now on the west edge of town, I can't think of the name now, the telemarketing.
Marketing.
Yeah, marketing. There you go. They've left. How many more businesses can we afford to lose in a short time? I mean, that just happened and we're, I think, I'm not saying this is going to stop it, but we have to put up the barriers while we can to improve things and keep what we've got. We don't want to become the Audubon County next. If we want to become a regional community, we have to step forward. And I personally think things aren't going to change anything by putting this off. I mean, it's just, we're just killing more time and for something more to happen.
Well, that's my question to this board. Is there a reason that you're afraid to get or do not want to get public opinion on this?
I guess, Neil, I look at public opinion as part of this process. As we go through this study, there will be, key components of this will be public input. It's part of this.
You know, Neil, we, we, we didn't get public opinion. We spent more money the other day about two weeks ago buying a great, um, grader.
I understand that.
I mean, this is 10,000, isn't that much? And I, if this would be 50 or 100,000, yes. But 10,000, I mean, everything adds up.
Gene, we had public opinion when we passed the budget and that grader was in the budget.
Yeah, well.
This isn't even in the budget.
This isn't in the budget. It's going to take a budget amendment.
It's not in the budget.
I, I'm just very adamant about taking public opinion.
I am willing to take my stance and, and face the public on it.
I understood coming in here that 99% of the people here are going to be in favor of this project. That's very understood. That doesn't mean you're wrong. And, and there's a lot of very intelligent people in here. That's a very good comment. I'm respecting everything I've heard. But I'm here to represent the whole public. We're getting one side of the equation here, just like we got one side from R D G. I think they were respectfully honest when they gave their story, but their salespeople as well as writing the service. I'm, I'm just adamant about getting public opinion before we vote, before we pass this funding request.
I think this is a small, our, our contribution is a small investment for the, for the 10 small communities and the three unincorporated communities of Carroll County. If you want to include everybody, it's less than a thousand dollars apiece for each one of those, for our side of the investment. The, the community of Carroll, if, if they put their $10,000 in, that's theirs. But I think as far as I'm concerned, I think this is a small investment for the small communities of the county. I highlighted some things that Shannon put together here. Research will include analyzing current existing rental ownership and senior housing conditions available and needs. A finished deliverable product will include both the research findings as well as suggested strategies for housing development in Carroll County with specific actionable items per community as seen fit by the consultant. At that point, the communities and the county can take those strategies and determine which are closest to meeting the needs and fit within the community financial development capacity. So, you know, I understand that some communities, it may only be a paragraph. Some of the smaller communities in the county, it's going to be larger than, and that's what I expect. It has to be. Because that's why I'm making this motion. I'm making it for the communities of Carroll County. I think it involves faith in what we're doing, um, trust in the results. And then probably more important than anything, it's going to involve leadership that takes over from there, to take the results and do the right thing. My motion stands.
Any other discussion?
Roman.
Roman.
This whole thing we're hearing today seems to be a grandfather to a program that was back in 19, in the seventies, then called, I don't know if there's enough gray hair here to remember it, but in the 1970s, there was a program called the 235 program. Uh, it was mostly done up on the hill of Skyline Drive and in that area. Well, Harold Burrell had developed an area up and through there with quite small lots. And he put them up for sale to builders. And, uh, the government had a program there that would encourage builders like us. And we purchased nine lots from him. By, by nine lots, we could buy them pretty reasonable. And, uh, a young person like you people all have in mind here, uh, who are looking for a job, young families, they could move in that house with a $200 down payment. Or if they had a good kitchen range, move that in, that was their down payment. And they could move in. And, uh, that was the 235 program. And I know we did nine houses. Virgil Baumover was one street over and he'd done quite a few on that street. But, uh, the lots were small enough. We did houses. We were allowed to do $22,000. Here's $22,000. You show us what you can do with $22,000. Well, we did a 26 by 42 house, I think it was. No garage. You had to set the house to the side so there were two for a future garage. No finished basement and, but three bedrooms, one bath. But I think we have a problem here. How are we going to educate these young folks that they've got to do with a less fancy house than what Dad and Mom got or Uncle P or Aunt Josephine's got? Everybody seems to want the same kind of house like Dad and Mom got. And I don't know how you're going to get out of that category. That's part of our problem today. We've had a number of people want new houses. They moved to Carroll, but they see a house that, uh, by the time we priced it out, we're up there about $290,000. Well, they can't handle it. The appraisal won't go up that high. We've got a nice group of lots ready up there on 11th Street and a bunch of land ready to do some more. But they just can't handle them kind of lots. Their job won't capitalize enough for that. So I don't know what you're going to do with these young folks. They just won't settle for a less type of a home. They've got to have three bathrooms. They've got to have a finished basement and a patio in the back and four panel fans in the house, central air, of course. That's where we got a problem with. I don't know what you think. Matt, what do you think?
What do I think? I think this is just broader than single-family housing. You know, single-family housing is one element of it, but it's also elderly housing. It's also apartments. It's also retirement homes. You know, all these aspects come into play here. And for planning purposes, we as a community need to know a footprint to go forward. You know, and we can all make individual decisions as developers, you know. Well, I'm going to put on 25 lots on the south side of town. Well, that's great. I kind of flow my lots to how houses are built. But when does Ed Smith build, you know, another retirement home, you know, like Orchard View? That, is it needed? Well, there's probably a strong possibility for that, but this is going to help him make that decision. You know? So it, it's a planning thing, guys. It's not, you know, it's, it's 10 grand from the county and that's it. But it's going to help us plan our communities, our county going forward. It's the biggest thing.
There's got to be some help from someplace. Is it the city? Our, our city engineer is, is so good at keeping us on our toes to do a very good job with our plumbing, underground plumbing, compaction, good streets. That's why we have good streets. It's the, everything in our town is in good shape because of that. But it's expensive. And that's why lots are so high priced. The people in Glidden and Manning and so forth, they could temp with them. They could do cheaper lots, uh, but they supported themselves. Well, now they know what it costs if they pay to build themselves. Where we developers, we pay our own stop sign. We pay our own fire hydrants and all those things ourselves. Well, the lots get up there. So why do you have to have 40 plus thousand per lot? So that's a big difference. So then when you want to sell to a young couple with maybe just getting started, only married two years, well, that's pretty tough. And then when they go out and get a job, they make $11 an hour, it, it just don't work.
Hey, maybe, what do you do? Any other questions or comments?
Couple of quick, just follow-up questions. Adam, I've, you know, put you in the spot here at all. You're the, no councilman here. What happens if City of Carroll does not support this?
Well.
What happens then?
If a person would develop a piece of land, let's again, go back to, Harold Burrell was no dummy. He got into the smaller lots and he could, he could do, uh, like take the old park subdivision. And there's still a few lots left there. But you took the smaller lots, less money. People could build with one car or, or a smaller home. They'd get in there a little cheaper. But so many of you take it up there and show them a house, they're, oh, you want something bigger. Well, what do you do?
Right. Sorry, Roman. I was just asking if, if this passes with the Board of Supervisors today, Shannon, what, I take it the city will take it up next Monday? You don't have council meeting tonight, do you?
Yes.
Is it on tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So what would happen?
I guess to answer you, in terms of the funding, there are, there are sources, there are efforts we could do to raise the funding. So it is a little bit about funding. But so much more importantly, we want to have the city and county on board with the idea of the planning and the strategies and a long-term vision. You know, we could, we feel like if we rounded up the money and we went and did this project by ourselves in six months, if we didn't have the support of the supervisors and council before we started, implementation's not, not going to go nearly as well as, as possibly could for long-term. So, um, I guess hopefully that answers.
So it's kind of back to the drawing board then? I mean, as far as what would happen?
I mean, if.
In terms of.
The problem doesn't go away.
Yeah, right, right, right. Just whether, whether this housing study continues. Yeah, the problem, and the problem's not going to get solved overnight either.
If one entity didn't support, you're asking, would the project still go forward?
Right.
Of course it would.
Okay. You know, I mean, Matt, Matt just got done saying, you know, it's $10,000 and that's it. But I don't know if he was speaking as.
Well, I guess to answer that, we wouldn't come back next Monday and say, hey, we now need 15. $10,000 is a financial commitment that we're asking for, for the project.
Less anything that Manning puts in, right?
And if there's, if there is any grants that come in, that comes off of what?
Total.
That would reduce whose investment?
Three-way total.
Okay. So a dollar 33 cents apiece.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Call and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Call and post.
Aye.
I'd like to thank everyone for their input today.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
You need anything else, Tom?
Uh, air conditioning. How much get up on the roof? You want to kick in?
Get up on the roof.
Yeah, I saw that on the agenda. You guys, really?
We are.
Really?
It was going to cost us five to do one on our own.
Sure.
And, uh, if we could do one for the whole county, we'll get our money back out of it. I mean, it's not a question on that.
Thanks, Shannon.
See you, Shannon.
Thanks so much.
Yes, my, this is Marty, Department of Sports Supervisor. Sorry, we're a little bit late with our meeting this morning. I had it set up for 9:30. Uh, we will be in session all morning this morning. We've got the, uh, meetings. We have another thing at 11 o'clock. But if you get this message between now and 11, you can go back. Or if not, we'll try calling you back around probably 10:00 or 11:15. But if you have time between now and 11:15, you can call back at 712-792-4923. Thank you.
Okay, I guess with that one, a little bit there, we'll go down to secondary road, Dave.
Hi, David.
Morning, Dave.
Morning, Dave. I think I've got one drain, but I might have had multiples. I did have a request for some tree removal on Drain 77 up in an area to where we'd done some work in the past. It's a real jungle up there. This was just from one resident. Visited with a resident, it might be more appropriate to talk about it again during raise-up time. It's going to be really difficult to get in there now. We don't have any other requests. Maybe we could take another look at it, but it's just, it's one of those extremely difficult...
That's true, the city.
Yeah. 12th Street, kind of in that neck of the woods. Really, really overgrown. The drain I do have is Drain 70 up in Breda. Dean is really kind of the expert on this.
Yeah, we discussed it a little bit the last meeting. Yeah, they went ahead and probed, they found where the drain is. And... Yeah. Right about... This is all wet back from, yeah, let's see. Yeah, that's right. From here on back. There's actually water standing on the other side of the highway. Where this, right here, there's actually water standing in the ditch there.
And you're draining north.
Draining north.
Oh, it does drain north there?
Yeah, this goes to Black Hawk, yeah. So they had trees. These trees used to extend down here, and your roots got in. The drain here, they removed those. And, but now we have an issue right here. There's some really nice maple trees right up in here, causing some issues, so... And now it's dry, simply because there's capacity, you know, in the tile now to take the water away. So it's pretty obvious what the issue is.
It on there, Marty, or not? I'm thinking it's a 15, 16, 18, something like that. It's pretty good size style.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it gets bigger as it goes, heads north.
Did they print it out on that, on the map, yeah?
What's 15 on the main, the one with the lateral? I don't see the size on it.
Oh, the laterals? Yeah, I don't know what those are.
Twelve, right by the ballpark, it's 12, and then it goes to a 15 north.
Yeah. And that might be what, it might go to an 18. But...
Yeah, I think y'all went in, it was an 18. Yeah, we were talking about that.
Well, my question is, is like, is it more economical to replace this with non-perforated tile? Or, I'm not sure, do we need to...
This is the golf course up in here.
Tear that up, sure. Okay.
Yeah, I think what, I think they plan to, what they would like to do is repair the drain and cut the trees down. And I think, I think in 2013, when they did that other one, I think that was a stipulation that the county made at that time, that...
So we've done a drain in this here?
It's at the golf course's expense the next time this happens. So...
What is that red line? That just about...
That's, that's the tile.
That is the tile.
Yeah.
Man, it goes along a whole line of trees over there, doesn't it?
Where it's at, right? Yeah, where the problem is.
Yeah, but right here, a lot of...
Down there is a golf course?
Even up in here. Well, that's, that's not the golf course, that's the, by the park up here. Yeah. Oh, over here too, yeah.
No, I don't think, let me look at that again, but...
That's the tile, it just goes parallel to that whole little...
You know, it certainly does, and that would be the city's. Those are the city's trees. Those are evergreens.
Who's with these then?
These are the city's as well. But you get right down in here, this is the golf course. You know, any, on this side of the drain would be the golf course, on this side of the drain would be the... But now this goes through the golf, this goes, here's the ballpark.
So this goes through that row of trees?
Yeah, this is the little, little course, and then it goes north of town.
Are these, are these far enough away that they're not causing a problem then?
I don't think they've caused a problem, yeah. And I don't know those aggressive, or those, they're quite as aggressive.
Yeah, it might be something I want to talk to them about. Actually, that's along the trail, so that could be...
Could be.
Could be our expense. I know that Conservation actually planted some trees within the last couple of years, right here by the elevator. Which is not, which, that's off theirs, but I'm, so I'm, yeah, that's, that's not going to make any difference there, but...
Those ones.
These might, these, these might be actually the Conservation's. So I can talk to Jason about that. I'm not sure that the Conservation actually planted those, but maybe the city did, but...
Well, Dean and Dave, you've been up there, what's your recommendation?
I think it'd be great if the trees could go. I hate to say that, I love trees just as much as anybody else. But even if we put in a, we'd have to put in a real long section of non-perof tile. And on those larger tiles, those joints aren't near as good as, you know, just having like a long field tile. And I think the tree roots would have a good chance of getting in one of those sticks of tile, one of those 20-foot joints that they've got. So we might be eventually back to it, so...
I think they would take all those trees out of there if we didn't, if we did not put a non-perforated tile in, simply for the fact that it would help it drain.
I guess one of, it's one of those things, until you dig it up, you're not going to know what's there.
No. It's certainly showing signs the way it sounds.
It's not an opportunity for a cam, a camera to go through there?
It is, but they're pretty expensive. And I think we could probably get in the area, you know, in a localized area like that, because it runs into a fair amount of money. And the camera that we did at Glidden, if there was enough tree roots, they couldn't get through.
There is, I think this week, actually, I think they've got somebody coming in because of the guy problems with roots in their sewer line. And they are going to take some of those out now.
If there was some straits or something there that you had to rip up, but it senses just grass and whatnot, you know, it wouldn't take too much to dig a hole, pop down in there, run the tape up, stick your flashlight up in the look.
See what's there.
To see, see what's there. I think probably more economical to do that rather than a camera.
Are you suggesting we do that first? I hate to remove trees if that's not the cause.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that'd be the first thing we'd do, is we'd dig the tile up and see what the problem is, if it is tree roots. But the trees eventually will, if they're that close, they will get into the tile, and they will cause trouble.
Can't we kick the can down the road?
Just a matter of time.
I mean, the thing with it, you can dig it up every 50, 100 feet and just look, you know, see what's there.
Yeah. It won't take long to diagnose it, you know?
Well, there's a maple tree right over the, right over the tile.
I was saying that'd be the place that they'd go share it.
And that's where, and that's where the problem starts.
Yeah.
But you can't get by with just removing that one tree?
No, probably not.
Right.
You know, I think, I think while, while they're, you know, while, I would suggest while they're in there, if there's a way that they can find out, run a tape up there or something. Or maybe when this guy's in town, that they can run and clean it out, back up north.
Well, I had a guy tell me, that they dug up a tile that was plugged, and they had the trees were gone, and there was trees there. And they said that the thing was still full of roots, and that the roots were growing yet, even though there's no tree above. Did you put tordon on them? Why, I don't think they were treated. But they said this, the trees were gone for a while, and there still was active roots in the tile.
Really?
That they were still growing, yet even though there was not a tree there.
They were still alive.
I think there were two maple trees in Glidden. And they were a long ways downstream, and a long ways upstream, and they were, they were big, finger-sized roots. Still remember watching the video of that camera bumping up against them, trying to get through.
But you can't jet them once you get that big, you know?
No, and that, you know, that runs into money too. When you know in the end what's going to happen.
But, yes, Creed, to remove trees if we repair that?
Yes. And, you know, you know, maybe if you just want to, just go ahead for right now. Dig a hole, and then we can come back.
I think that makes sense, take that step first, because it might not be as extensive as we think. And hate to have them take all these pine trees out, find out that their roots, and I don't think a pine tree's roots are as aggressive as, say, a maple tree. But...
We're not having an issue there right now.
But I think a pine tree goes more down, or... These other trees will. Then go out like this. Yes, that's, that's why the deciduous trees are a lot more aggressive, coniferous trees. Well, I know a tree that I wish was there, that I could take it down. I want this in my front yard.
So is there any agreement to do it that way?
I think, I would say...
Dig a hole and invest in it.
And I'm like you, Mark, I hate digging trees down. If you got to, you got to.
And they're willing to do that?
I would say if you do that, you're almost going to take three of them out, don't you? Probably.
And right now, there's about three dead trees in there because of a water issue.
Killed them.
Yeah. Killed them. So it's kind of a no-in situation.
A little watered the trees.
A little watered the trees.
You could have trouble all the way through there though.
So explore.
Explore.
Okay. Will do. That's, that's hopefully the last drain for now. I've got three utility permits, all from Western Iowa Power Cooperative.
Do we need a motion for the drain up there?
I'll move that, we'll go ahead and do the exploratory up there.
No, second to that motion.
Got a motion, and it's, you have a second to explore Drain 70 in City of Breda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Do what you want to do.
I'll just go down the line here. This is, they're all with Western Iowa Power Co-op. This is the only one that's an underground cable. I guess this others have a little bit of underground with it. But this is replacing existing underground cable along 240th Street from Aspen to Eagle. So it's quite a lengthy stretch. It's actually on a five-mile house road. They're going to put it in the shoulder. They're going to bore underneath the cricks. We do have a bridge there that we're going to replace on that, on that stretch, just a mile off the OCO. Meet with him and talk, talk to him tomorrow about making sure that we...
Who's, who'd you say was doing it?
Western Iowa Power Co-op. South Crawford, RRC. That's what they are, I mean, yeah.
They're going to Eagle.
Aspen to Eagle, so from the county line, we're going to Eagle. Because that'd be five miles, so... Use my fingers. And the next one again is from Western Iowa Powers Cooperative. And with this particular one, there are overhead poles from the intersection of 240th to the intersection of 260th, all along Birch Avenue. So this is a north-south run along Birch Avenue from 240th to 260th, with an overhead line. And it looks like they've got a bore or two in there for some underground feeds to the, to the, to the notch. And the final one is on 170th Street. And it runs from Aspen to Eagle, also on 170th Street. And it's an overhead. I like those overheads.
Boy, they're doing a lot in that area.
They are, yeah. You can see them. Wish those days were back, when we had telephone poles, and stuff, all this underground stuff.
Gives the birds a place to rest.
Yeah.
I make motion to approve the utility permits, okay?
You got a motion on the floor to approve utility permits? All in favor, say aye.
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry.
Trying to help you out, Marty.
Sorry about that. Got a motion and a second, now we'll vote for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think there's two copies in there, Marty. I don't know if there's two or three.
Is that Jim Prummel, was that Charlie?
Yeah, Marty.
That's Charlie's brother, and he's about to retire. Jason Lee is going to take over as superintendent.
Good question, what was the backfill out of the residential pit, what was that for?
Special backfill, that was that gravel that, of Henningsons that they were using underneath the asphalt on 141. There's, it's just kind of a good grade of gravel. Pretty coarse, coarse stuff. That was what was left.
Henningson just pulled their plant out of the residential pit. There's quite a bit of material there left. I don't know, are they going to haul it out of there, or put it for sale, or, you know?
I don't know.
I don't either. There's some truck stuff around, but the asphalt plant is gone. But there's a fair amount of that ground, so it's pretty fine, because they're going to use it for asphalt.
Yeah, it'd have to be the sand component for asphalt, I suspect, yeah.
There's some of the others, that's not too bad, too. But maybe they're going to haul it all out to the next project, I'm not sure.
It's always, they always, they always make more, because they always usually sell more.
Out?
They're going along at the county line pretty good, I think. They went clear back to the north end this morning. I haven't talked to Paul, but that was his plan Friday, to start, start with the inch and a half. And they, they made it close to the railroad tracks with one, one line. And I don't think they quite made the other ones.
So now they're going back to north?
Clear to the north end, they'll pull, pull the inch and a half down until they get to the point where they've got to go back on the base course of that wedge.
So they only got a half, half of the first layer done there?
Hmm, no, they've got probably 70% of the first layer done, because they got, they made it all the way down on one side, and most of the way down on the other side, maybe two miles.
So now they're going up to north?
They're going on the second layer, yeah, the top layer.
Separated that way?
So how long do you expect them to be up there yet?
I think all of those are leased, or maybe another day, depending, depending on how it goes. They got a few more trucks, they had four Dodge asphalt trucking for them, and...
I drove up to Wednesday. Denver coming down the East Lane.
Yeah. Coming down the East Lane, heading south, right. Yeah. The whole road is...
All roads open up?
He just got a text.
Okay. Apparently a lady's basement flooded in Lanesboro, and there's an insurance claim on that from a adjuster, from the rain, and her, the last rain we had.
Supervisors, Marty speaking.
I've kind of looked at it.
Okay, would, yeah, would be, let me grab it here for you. What's Sarah Anderson's, do you have her cell number?
She doesn't have it, I think.
Who are you with now? In contact? Just looking for Sarah.
Are they going north into Zach County at all? I mean, if the, if Zach County, you know, Tewali, I guess is my question.
Just, just to make the transition.
Oh, that's it? They're not doing any, they haven't?
No. No, they're, they're...
Sure.
Should be able to go over there tonight and see.
I was just curious. You know, it would have been a great opportunity for them, too.
Can you give her my cell phone number, if you may call this afternoon?
Okay. Mark Bearmore's on the, on the board with her, and he is here. Could I give you his cell number, and you could call him back this afternoon? Would that be possible? Okay, his number is 712-830-2386. And if you just want to call him this afternoon, we're in board meeting this morning, but give me a little bit of a second. Okay, thank you. You bet. Bye.
On to Drain 45, apparently there is an insurance claim. Went up there and looked at that quite a bit Friday. There's, there's our drain tile going through, which appears to be functioning properly, Drain 45, the main going through. And then there's a 36-inch diameter... And then there's a 36-inch diameter, you might wanna call it culvert, going through that runs underneath the city street, and looks into a junction box, and then runs underneath Old 286, which is our road through town. We wound up talking to the current mayor and the former mayor there, and he said there was some flooding there. It flooded this lady's basement right by where our intakes are. It was, it was like the culvert was not taking the water across the road like it was maybe plugged, rose up and ran over the street where the actual plug is, if in fact there is a plug. I don't know. Paul, I think, has volunteered to crawl in there with the big flashlight and walk up, because it's maybe, it might be 100, 100-plus feet of culvert. And we popped some manhole covers and looked what we could at the other day. So this is kind of news to me, but I'll call the insurance adjuster. They all assume since there's a drainage district tile, that there's a relationship, but the drain tile is carrying some surface water. And this was just kind of a surface water issue. So I have to follow up on that, I guess.
We are gonna discuss this.
Investigate it.
Did you see that?
No, I haven't.
I'll forward your copy of that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Dave, we did some work up there, what, two, three years ago, up in the northwest part of town. Where is this in relation to that?
South of there.
South of there.
South of there. Really, probably, it's just, it's where the drain crosses and where the culvert crosses, right there by the post office. And I think the residence is just to the south of that, on the south side of the street. It looked like the water came up, went over the road, kinda ran around through their driveway, and must've been high enough to where it ran in the house. Could be kind of an interesting claim, if in fact the culvert is plugged.
Think about this. Do we pay crop damage if water doesn't get off the farm fast enough? Just a thought.
Well, if it's a culvert up there, or is it a culvert on the county road?
It's about a half and half. It's a culvert on the city road with some intakes on it, and a culvert on the county road, and they both join together in the same thing. And I think we've actually had a part in constructing the conjunction box within the right-of-way of Old 286 and the city street. Wish I had a map, I don't know if that would help or not. But I don't think, I'm not sure the drainage district and this tile line or this culvert crossing the road are commingled. I think the drainage tile is below that. I don't, I don't think it's part of this reason, though. The old mayor thinks something might be wrong.
Check it out.
I'm declining to agree with him.
If you're talking with an insurance adjuster, this person fortunately has insurance.
Yeah.
They're just deciding, just insurance coming back to you, probably.
So, hopefully I can report back on this next week.
Hopefully, if it rains in the meantime.
Yeah. Paul wants a kayak, a small one.
I know, we just wanted to ask him.
Time to wear a hard hat.
I asked him if he had kneepads, and he said, no, I think he can do that Russian kinda dance, walking through on his feet.
Cossacks.
Is that thirty?
It's a thirty-six. Yeah, and you can see where the water was, it was a considerable amount of water that went through town.
Better make sure he's willing to turn around fast, get out, if he sees something else is in there.
Yeah, well, when we popped the manhole the other day, we were looking down at it to see where the junction of it was. All of a sudden, something comes out of a side tile line in it, and we jumped back, didn't know what it was, and it was a cat.
I was thinking, I was thinking something to the cat family.
I'm sure it wasn't a cougar.
Well, it looked pretty big when they saw it.
You might have to excavate that manhole.
Oh, boy.
Dave, later on in today's agenda, we're gonna talk about adopting a distracted driver policy. And I know that, you know, a couple of months back, you had asked, you know, the guys wanna know if they could have headsets as part of their uniforms and things. And we've been strongly encouraged to adopt a distracted driver policy. And the one, we had three different options, I think there was three of them. We sent them all to Renee, and Renee had one that she already had prepared that other counties have used, that is kind of a hybrid of the three, but the least restrictive. Do you have any comments about that? It's certainly going to pertain, much so to your staff. We don't have to act on it today, but we've been asked to act on it. I wasn't really gonna have to object by any stretch, I just wanted to get his comments.
I had, I had the same thought.
Can I chime in on this, while we're talking about...
You certainly may.
Well, it's gonna be difficult for us to go along with this policy. Seeing this, it's the first time, we've seen it over the weekend. A lot of where I'm going down the road, we get calls from citizens, we get calls from comm center, all the other deputies. What are we supposed to do, pull offside of the road all the time? Number two is, we have computers in our cars, you know, constantly on those computers, seeing where he lives, where, and so forth, so on. I don't think it's gonna be a good policy for us to have.
Not realistic enough.
No. I mean, there would have to be an exception or something. I mean, obviously, when you have the computers, that would definitely be a distraction, I would think, if...
Even the county radio was a distraction, we found out sometimes, even using the two-way radio, you're calling some, I think CDL-wise, I think they're not supposed to be using handhelds with your CDL.
I don't know if, I don't know if there's a direct connection with what happened in Audubon County there over the winter, when that deputy spun around there, but I seem to think as though there's a connection there.
Yeah, I remember reading about that.
But I think there was other issues there, too. I was just, I thought he was distracted, I think it might've been some speed involved.
Well, you know, generally, road conditions would've entered into it, too. I mean, it's certainly rarely any one cause, but...
Maybe it's not a gravel road going around a curve.
You know, and after you bring this up, it's also probably an issue with the ambulance. Because there are times they're talking to the hospital here. I know they've got a radio on that, but if that guy's busy, sometimes they have to drive it to the... Deliver it.
And again, she said it was the least restrictive of the three. Again, I'm not looking to act on it right now, but I just, I wanted to catch it.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, you can take it. Yeah.
We all know, you know, where it's intended, is so they're not, you know, yakking on the phone, talking to their sweetheart, but you know, if they're, how do you discern that? You know, I mean, you know, pick up a gallon of milk.
Can I have, who brought this to the...
ICAP.
Or... You know, they can't even get anything past your legislature out, can ICAP come around and force it down your throat when making, or legislature can't even make a decision?
Right, they're just trying to bypass it.
Well, like I said, I don't think it would work for us in any way. Except, I don't think the ambulance would. You know, we've got on our radios, that's the same thing with electronic devices. That's another electronic device we have.
And it would distract you. You gotta hang that clip back on to the, or you know, the mic back on the clip. You know, it's dark and...
I mean, it's, I mean, it's a nice idea, but I don't think it would be feasible for us in any way.
Most all, this is really covered by law with the CDL guys.
You know, I can't, I'm in the same position. So, I have a, I have a mount for my cellphone, and I carry a Bluetooth headset. And I just click.
Are you distracted when you put that to?
Well...
Yeah, you are.
Absolutely. But I'm distracted when I'm...
Well, what's the difference between driving down the road with you have a can of pop beside you, or a roast beef sandwich on your lap, and your wife sitting right beside you? You still have that distraction there, too, where you have somebody sitting there beside you, talking to you. Is that a distraction also?
Right.
Before changing clothes.
Or cheechy clothes. Don't even go there, chief.
We're not going there.
You have, we haven't had a problem with that.
Well, there was a lady that used to stop her, told us about that one.
Well, we got two opinions on it, so...
Getting some discussion, anyway.
It was ICAP that brought it, yeah.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, they, you know, talking about insurance issues, and you know, I mean, it's...
Well, I mean, can we go to, go back to ICAP and say, hey, look, you know, we've got these issues with our emergency units, Sheriff's Department?
We most certainly can. It's just, they're free to set their rates.
Yeah, yep, you're right. I mean, can there be exceptions? In those cases?
I think a lot of this, we're really covered with our CDL. If they get a hands-free device, that would be covered there, but most of the guys are pulling over.
Well, throughout storm watching, the tornado's coming up towards them, and you think they're gonna stand and pull over and report it? No, they're gonna keep going and report it.
Has ICAP followed up with us and say, hey, have you guys done anything yet since that June?
No, but I did, I can remember talking to them. I asked the question, is there a difference between a deputy or, you know, somebody that's out on just standard patrol, you know, say just driving the county, that, you know, they're not in an emergency situation, they're just on call, or I'm not sure, or on duty, versus being, you know, going to a call, responding to a call, you know? There's two different situations. If you're just on duty and it's not an emergency situation, would it be a big deal to pull over? Probably, maybe not. I don't know, I'm not a cop. But in an emergency situation, I can understand you're not gonna pull over, you know, because seconds are counting, but, and they didn't really have much to say about that. So, that was my only question to them, because I understand that, yeah, if you spot a tornado, are you gonna sit there, pull over and use your phone to call it in? No.
Well, when we, when we do get to it on our item, maybe we'll just take it under advisement for now.
Yeah, it was just a recommendation.
See if there's any other options.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Have a nice week, everyone.
You, too.
Drive it cool.
I don't see Carl, do we let Doug go first?
Oh, he hasn't waited long enough yet.
I ain't gonna take long at all. Go to the recorder, we record.
You what?
Patiently waiting in the lane.
No, no problem. This is April, May, and June, quarterly report. I guess what I would say is, there's not a lot of changes, kind of basically speaks for itself. The permits are gonna start coming back in again at the beginning of next year. We're gonna see some changes on that, but probably around the first of January, there'll be issues on that, but doesn't really, it's out of line or anything, that's a...
Permits need to be renewed.
Yeah.
They're not one and done?
No.
How long are they?
Five.
Five years?
Yeah. And the legislature basically didn't do anything with it this year at all, like we My pool's three all these days. Right today, we only have four. Finally got to root some. Yeah, we got, still have some high-profile ones down there, but the main one, we got out of there.
Costly one?
Yes. Got sentenced in the morning, by ten o'clock, he was on his way to... So, somebody else's issue, probably now it's their fault. Yeah. But a lot of times, they don't have to come back for that, that'll judge and make that determination from there, so it's not an issue that hopefully we won't have to deal with. We have another one that's basically coming up now, is asked for a change of venue. That could be a costly one for us, but I'll keep you informed on that, but you know.
That's the Coon Rapids one.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's no further questions, I make a motion to approve the quarterly report from the Sheriff's Department.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to approve the Sheriff's quarterly report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same thing.
Motion carries. Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, guys.
Sweet and simple.
Good fit.
There you go.
Nice, guys.
Thank you, too.
Okay, should we call Carl?
Yeah, 167.
Or halfway for a five-minute report?
Yeah.
Yeah, Carl, this is Marty up on the board. We're just, you ready for you and I to record or really for, if you have a chance?
Should I wave him right on down here?
Okay, we'll go from there then. Thanks.
Customer right now, he's gonna be up when he gets...
Yeah, here comes Marilyn.
Here comes Marilyn. I wouldn't do Marilyn then.
Hi, Marilyn.
Perfect timing.
Well, I saw Dave walk out. I didn't count it. So that's getting close, maybe.
We'll go to, would he record it or this quarterly report?
Um, we're right on target with what we did a year ago. As a matter of fact, on my year-end, we had a better year, which is nice to see. And compared to what we had last year, we're probably around 5,000. We had a better quarter than last year by about 5,000. But over the year, from this year to last year, the overall, the recording went up, and, I mean, everything, most, 90% of my line items went up. You know, just enough that it, it's moving, finally, I think, progressing a little more. We're back to, we're not where we were in 1011, but we're better than 1314 already. And right now, we're even, things are being a little more progressive, and real estate's moving a little differently, and numbers and different, just different things in the real estate lines. And as far as what I sent to the state, last year I sent them right at 224,000. This year I sent them 253, almost 254,000. So, this year, I sent the state of Iowa 29,000 more than I did last year. So, that's also a good sign for us. I mean, it's the DNR, it's the vitals, it's the real, it's a little bit of everything. It's not just one particular line item, that, but it's a little bit of everything that moved up and forward. So that's, that's a good feeling after the last couple of years, which have been kind of flat. And...
What was it, what was the total, again?
Which one?
That you sent to the state, this year?
This year, I sent 253,972. This should be your second sheet on the state year-end.
Oh, there it is, okay.
And last year, I sent 224,711.
You said yours is about 5,000.
Yeah, it's, which is nice. Every little bit moving in that direction's a good thing, especially after the last two years, we've been kinda, kinda flat, so it's been, I hope that keeps in that upward movement. So, that's really not much. We're just into our, we're starting snows and ATVs again, you know, that's gonna start September first into, you know, renewals. One thing that, one thing that's been interesting is, since the ordinance has passed, the ORV and ATV ordinance, that county ordinance, we've been registering a few more. Yeah, which is good, because two reasons, it does get them in the system. So, if something would happen, they were stolen or whatever, or if someone sells it, it's in, it's in the system. So, even if the Sheriff's Department or anybody has to check something on a, on a VIN number, they can. They can run those. And so, it's, that's been a little bit of an increase in that type of activity because of that ordinance being there.
What did that cost them, eh?
Seventeen seventy-five.
That's good for...
A year.
Per year?
Uh-huh. Yeah. And that's part of what the ordinance says, they have to have a current. But, um, it's, that part has been, you know, brought in a little bit more, uh, activity as far as... And I think that's gonna continue as still the word passes, and different ones are using them, and, you know, different things like that. So, it is, that part has been good. It's been kind of helping get, get those particular vehicles in the system one time, at least. So, even if they don't decide not to register it again, at least it's one time in the system, paperwork's there. In the future, it just makes for easier renewals and things like that, especially if someone trades one in or sells it. So, it's been, we've had some activity, different ones are talking about the same ordinance in different counties, or, I think, all looking at different things like that. So, anything else?
Make a motion, we approve the recorder's reports.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve the recorder's quarterly report? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call in opposed, same thing.
Thanks.
Thanks, Marilyn.
Thanks, Marilyn.
Okay, with that, we'll go to the ITGIS zoning department for the report. Carl?
Good morning, Carl.
Carl, what have you been doing down there for the last quarter?
Nothing.
Getting my afternoon nap. Yeah, you feel better than I am.
Must've been short, 'cause it's not on your time log.
Yeah.
Well, when we called you, you said you were with a customer, and Mr. Paulson has a monopoly on staging things, so...
Yeah, I know.
Don't tread so carefully.
I know, I know where I, where I'm at on the totem pole. I work in the basement.
It's only one way out.
You're the foundation, Carl. I think it's too late to go up anymore.
You're the foundation.
Oh, I see.
Paint it yellow, we'll buy it.
That's a good one. I heard that. I've heard that before. Well, um, yeah, I haven't been doing much this last quarter, so... Over the report here with you a little bit, if you had a chance to look at it. Flood plane's been a, the biggest issue on the zoning side. Appreciate Mark and Marty coming to the, uh, meeting there, uh, this weekend, on the volunteer program for public education and mitigation and outreach that FEMA was here for. And it's about a year late, I think, according to their schedule, that we're supposed to be looking at projects or things that we'd like them to help us with, and give them ideas, and they'll put it in the budget request for next fall. And so, the help really won't come until, like, next October. We're also in the middle of the new firm maps for, uh, flood insurance rate maps, with all the new mapping of the county. That meeting's gonna be on the twenty-eighth with the public officials. Hopefully, you've either gotten, uh, information from DNR, or you will be getting here shortly, maybe in the, in the form of a letter to Marty, I'm not sure. But on the twenty-eighth at two o'clock, DNR, Jason Count from DNR wants to meet with all the public officials. This'll be city and county, on these new firm, uh, flood insurance rate maps. As, I believe it's at two o'clock.
Yes.
And then we're also going to have a, uh, opportunity for the public to come in at six, from six to eight. Uh, that's kind of what I've been working feverishly on this morning, was trying to see what kind of a...
What day was that again, Carl?
Twenty-eighth.
What is that, sorry?
That'll be the... Yeah. Yeah, I think I reported to you last time that, well, let me give you a copy of this. I kind of generated this. This morning, I was looking at, uh, parcels, and what impact it would have, um, on the number of parcels in the county. And just looking at the, uh, unincorporated area, there's two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine parcels that would be affected in some way, shape, or form by the hundred-year floodplain. Now, that may mean that there's only a, a sliver, you know, that's in the floodplain, or it could be the whole parcel. And so, based on kind of our discussion the other day with FEMA, do we want to notify everybody that they're now gonna be in the floodplain or what? I was kind of working this morning hard to try and see what a mailing list might be, 'cause of course, because we've got twenty-nine hundred, or close to three thousand parcels, that doesn't mean we have three thousand owners. So, I was kind of looking at, uh, paring down that mailing list based on, uh, address of the ownership. And so far, I'm down to about, uh, fourteen sixty-six, but I'm only in the thirty-one hundred address range. I would say it's probably gonna come around, you know, eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred and fifty.
Addresses.
Addresses. You know, so if we would want to do a mailing out to them, that's... I would have to get cracking, because I'm a one-man ballgame here, so... Or if we just want to put it in the paper, I mean, we've, I got a, I've got a sample press release, you know, we can put in the paper. I don't know how many people that would actually bring in, you know, that, uh, would read it, probably very few. I'm not even sure how, you know, what the effect of a letter would be saying.
But then you probably have some absentee landlords too.
Yeah, you do have quite a few absentee landlords. So, you know, I'd kind of like some direction from you on that, but...
I think like a public notice in the paper, and then maybe some township trustees, and some of those, maybe.
Press release to all media would be...
Do something with the radio, maybe.
Yeah.
And like to represent Drain Twenty-three possibly.
Okay, so, County District Representatives and, uh...
Township trustees.
Township trustees.
I mean, just put all the mail-up flyer out there, everybody, that's gonna...
If it was tax time, it'd be...
Yeah.
Be easier, easier, but, yeah, necessarily easy, but easier.
Streamlining a little bit.
Yeah. I was just curious to see how many would take to mail it, that's why I was kind of running through that this morning, but...
Are you comfortable with that?
I am if you are.
Do a public notice, and, and the township trustees, and Drain Twenty-three?
Uh, do you want just a news article or an actual public notice?
I'd, I'd do both. I'd do, I'd pay for a public notice and then see if they'll all post that press release. Right?
Yeah, I would say.
Get ahold of you, and we'll do it over there, we should probably do an article on it. Right, Rebecca?
He's not paying attention.
They often snooze when I talk.
Get ahold of him, do an article on that, meeting him, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, again, it's, you know, it's only a hundred and seven buildings, but that's a lot of property. You know, so, um, who knows what the potential for building is in that area, but, and that's really the, the biggest impact, unless there are some mitigation efforts that we need to look at that we're not aware of. I, you know, I talked to Dave about this volunteer meeting the other day, he couldn't be there. He really didn't have any suggestions for, you know, flood mitigation, other than, I mean, there probably isn't flash flood type thing, but it's kind of a different subject, you know? We don't have a lot of long-term impact when it comes to flooding out the county. How'd you feel about the meeting the other day, and you guys?
I thought it was fairly informative.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think, you know, we'll carry it on down the line, and, you know, take it to emergency management, and get the word out that way too. I, I've got to think there's gonna be some interest in it, you know, but...
Yeah.
It'll be up to the, each municipality as far as how far they take it. Manning, Coon, I can see them doing it.
Coon really has very little in the floodplain. It's kind of surprising that, that, you know, the river running around the north side, there's a lot of hill between them and the town, of course, the town's on the hill. Manning and Carroll are the, probably the biggest impact, or the biggest impact, so...
And I never really saw much in Manning though, either.
Well, they, they've been developing in the floodplain, and there were the, uh...
New fire station.
The fire station, and, you know, so they've had to work with that, but, uh, they've got it coming in from two different ways, from the east and from the north. So, it's kind of a, they're getting, kind of a double whammy, but Carroll's probably got the biggest impact. But I, it was out of those, uh, when I did my first query, I did it for the whole county, and how many parcels were impacted, and there was like three thousand three hundred and twenty-two, so that only left, uh, almost four hundred parcels in the incorporated communities that are impacted by that one hundred-year floodplain. And one of the discussion topics we had the other day with FEMA was, uh, making our ordinance maybe more restrictive, and looking at the five hundred-year floodplain, or instead of being one foot above, one foot above the one hundred-year floodplain, the year insurance rates go down the higher you build. So, if we would make our ordinance at two, three, about, two feet above the one hundred-year, or three feet above the one hundred-year impact insurance rate, again, we don't have a lot of impact on the buildings. But it's something to be, to talk about, yeah. Any other, any questions on the flood stuff? I'll get that stuff in the works, but I would encourage you to, to come by on the twenty-eighth, if you can, hear what they've got to say about the process. Again, those maps would, if the process goes like it's supposed to, they still won't be effective until November of two thousand sixteen, those flood insurance rate maps. On GIS side, um, a lot of things going on there. Probably the biggest thing for me is, uh, doing the comparison with the master street addressing guide and the alley database from nine-one-one, and comparing it to the street segments and the address point layers, getting ready for next gen nine-one-one. I'd hoped that they had a soft, they have software, actually GeoCom has a software, that when you split a line, right now, when I split a street segment, I have to then take that street segment and reassign all the, the features to it, and reassign the street range to those features. The software they have automatically will do that. When you hit the split, it will split the, the address range based on where you split it from, and, and reassign all the, the features. Which I, I was looking at as a really nice feature, I thought. And then, they also had a, uh, this software that does all the comparison between the M-SAG, the alley, and the GIS data, and tells you where your errors are, and you can go, you can go fix them. Which I thought would be a wonderful software to have. Because when we send our data to them, that's what they use. Well, the quote is, like, about thirteen thousand dollars. It just gripes me that, hey, it costs that much, but then, they're pretty much the only game of town. So, I haven't made any decisions on whether to recommend we do that or not. I'm still waiting, I'm out three weeks waiting for them to give me back a different assessment or analysis. That's what's most frustrating to me, is not being able to run that analysis, and you keep working. So, I'm now three weeks now, and I'm gonna get it back. So, I'm not making a recommendation at this point, I'm just kind of letting you know that's how they're... And that's one of the big projects I'm working on, but it's, uh, not going quickly. They're actually wanting to do another statewide assessment in November, which, if they're gonna be this slow at getting your analysis back, I'm not sure what, what good it's gonna do them for another statewide analysis. I'll keep you posted on that. Uh, anything else on GIS? Other words on, uh, the information technology side, we've been working a lot with the ambulance and Sheriff's Department, um, getting their equipment installed. We've gotten some, uh, new modems that Verizon, we're putting the Verizon cards in. Instead of being just a, a little consumer-grade air card that goes on the Sheriff's Department's laptops, that we've had some trouble with, you know, the vibrations and the USB connections. Uh, we're doing trunk-mount modem that has an antenna, and Tom Franzin has it in his pickup now. And he says the coverage is a lot better than with those consumer-grade cards, so, so that's good. Don't drop connection as often. And, so we're working with them, they're getting, they've all gotten some new laptops, and getting it in the ambulance and, and the Sheriff's Department. And then we also did in the last quarter, an engineer server changeover. We've had the server out there for quite a while, uh, that just hasn't ever been a real convenient time to do a, a switch over from one to the other. We finally got that done. And luckily, it was done in time for that server to crash about a week ago, so... The old one, nothing. We still had it, we still had it running, and all of a sudden, one morning, it was off, so, got that done in time. Other than that, besides my daily nap, I haven't been too busy.
Carl, uh, has there been any more discussion, Doug just left, any more discussion and decisions made as far as how and for how long we're storing video from the body cams?
John had wanted a couple of years.
Wow, wow.
And we don't, I don't know what the impact is, I haven't looked lately to see, well, I haven't looked lately to see if they're actually downloading it. You know, because we did set up a NAS drive. It's a separate drive just for their videos and pictures, because we wanted to keep them off the server. And I haven't checked lately to see if the deputies are actually doing it, and how much storage is left on it. We had, I think it was a eight-terabyte NAS drive, so there was a lot of room initially. But I don't know what the, the rate is of what they're storing, I'd have to look at that.
They're not storing everything.
That's what we're learning once.
But the cameras only come on when they remember to turn them on.
Yeah.
Whereas a, a dash cam will come on when they engage lights.
Mm-hmm. But that would be both kind of video, that would probably be saving. And the dash cam video is, uh, not as big per video as the body cams are.
It's non-HD.
The body cams are really nice resolution, you know, they say they're great pictures, you know? Well, the reason they're great pictures is because they, they're huge files. You know, like two gig files. I don't know what the average stop, you know, or time was, but the average file was around two, two gigs.
So, are you keeping everything from the dash cams as well, then, too?
If they download it, like I say, I don't know if they, I, I don't check that on a regular basis, so, I'd have to go see what, what's there. They should be.
They should be?
Well, you know...
You never know, I guess.
You know, the first initial thought was, well, we'll, we'll just say what, there's an incident, you know, well, if you call, if somebody calls up and said there was an incident or there wasn't one, then you don't have any proof of that either, so... I think that's why they were looking at maybe a two-year cycle. And then keeping, you know, anything that has a potential problem. But we're not managing that, that's gotta be them.
Right. Yeah, I was just asking you as far as that impacted you.
Back to you, have you heard any more on his property of Gene Steph's, December, May?
Uh, got a letter from the, uh, Corps of Engineers saying that he was fine with them. He's still waiting on a DNR permit.
Oh, so he is still...
Still pursuing it.
Working at the speed of it?
Well, at the, at the speed of DNR... Well, at the, at the speed of DNR is what he's working on. And that, you know, could be who knows how long, depends on, squeaky wheel gets the grease, you know, that kind of stuff.
Oh, we got, we're showing that.
Yeah. And the other issue now that has come up is that we went from an office building to an office with living quarters, and I said, you better be defining for me what living quarters are. So if it's a, if it's a room with a cot in it, you know, to spend the night once a while, I don't care, but, you know, if we're talking any more than that, then.
Twenty-four, seven.
Yeah, then we're, then it's a different issue, so you're supposed to be getting me that information.
Well, when I was, I was down there last week, I drove by there and there's a bunch of sand, gravel.
Gravel. Yeah, I got, I was down there and gave them a nine-one-one address on that property Friday, Thursday or Friday, and Gene was down there and said, yeah, you got a good deal from some of the gravel they were grinding up off of thirty, so I just bought it and dumped it there.
I don't know how the county's gonna have. Didn't get very much.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
No, the county's not getting very much either, there's some other people that got it as well, they.
They're getting a good deal.
I think they unbidded us, so we have a, a better deal on very little.
I see there was a sign there that said Cory, Cory Stappus Construction Site.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's there, but they put it up themselves.
So I figured there had to be some, some movement there.
When did that go up, are they?
Last week it was up.
Yeah, I didn't even notice, I was over there.
It's just a little stick.
It ain't very big, it's probably not bigger than that, but.
That's not very big, I probably would've seen that.
I'll make a motion to approve Carl's report.
We need a motion on you.
Normally it's just the elected officials to part of it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I said, I don't want to vote.
Be doing my part, stay here.
Thanks, Gene, I appreciate it.
I tried.
Vote of confidence. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay, but, um, next item is we get both plats in the package, Arcadia Township.
Take the both and change.
One's in Arcadia, one's in Luba. Yeah.
Base, little parcels are, are three acre parcel.
Adding buildings on them, looks like.
And I'm assuming based on the name, Hawk Building.
All right, yeah. I'd make a motion to approve both of the plats.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the plats. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those, same thing, motion carries. Okay, with that, we'll be down to the tables and that's also impacted.
This is unusual.
Routine runs.
Yeah, I have, I just, I had a question, I wanted to get that answered.
So if you have, change of the plat there as well.
I don't know.
Have any real questions?
Maybe I should ask Carl about that.
You might, yeah, 'cause he's the one that reviews them and makes sure that what they're putting on there is okay.
If there's no questions or objections, I make a motion to approve the payables.
Can I ask a quick question, real quick on those? I have just a couple things. Um, it was voted on to contribute five thousand dollars to the IDDA litigation fund for the lawsuit. Well, when we did that resolution and passed that, it did not state in there where we were paying that from. So I need to know where to pay that from. There is some money in general basic, it'd be in the supervisors department under legal and court-related services. That's really the only thing even remotely close to being a line item. We might have some money, I mean, we have money in there now, but we might have to do a budget amendment at some point to put more money in if we get anything. But I didn't, I didn't put it in because I didn't know where to take it out of. I don't know if that was ever decided on.
It was not.
We discussed that a little bit, but we never, never made a decision, I don't believe.
How much is in that legal? There's enough to cover this then?
There would be, I'm, I'm not saying that it.
I don't know many other legals, to me that would be a place to take it, but it's legal.
For example, I ran this, I used to budget almost twenty in that line item. We spent about sixteen in it last year, so there was about four left in it. So, you know, you know, if we get towards the end of the year, we might have to look at that line if it's low and do something about it. Uh, that's the line that the, the lease, is that revenue? Oh, I'm sorry, lease doesn't make sense to me. That's where we pay our rent for the parking lot out of. We also pay union services out of that line. Those are the two things that come out of there.
Rent for the fricky.
Parking lot.
Building, parking lot, okay.
Which is another thing we need to talk about, too. So that, I had a question on that, and then I wanted to add this to the payables. Um, this apparently was supposed to get paid and I never got a copy. It's the auditor seat dues, and seat is the election training that we have to keep up on. It's an annual thing, but I didn't have it in here because I just got it on Friday late.
Um, I would like to suggest that the board consider the payment of the Drainage Association support as an agenda item. And not part, not part of payables.
To discuss what fund to get it from?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine. We don't, there's no rush on paying that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
And last I knew, they wanted us to join their association.
Well, the bill included their dues and our contributions.
We are not going to do that, the way I understood it.
No.
Drain twenty-three is a member, but the board supervisors is not.
Okay. So my motion still stands to approve the payables, with the, with the one addition.
Okay, great.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve the payables, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're back to the next district, you have a policy.
The deja vu or what? I think we got our answer this morning, you know, um.
I think we need to just table it and then bring it up.
I think, Courtney, can you have another visit, uh, discussion with the insurance company about the situations we brought up this morning?
Or can we not?
They didn't care. This, you know, this is what, the, they, the way it was explained to me is they were giving us three samples. It was the county's decision what to have in their policy. It was just something they were recommending. They weren't gonna give legal advice on how to write the policy.
No reflection on the premium.
Well.
They say no, but.
You don't know.
Why would they recommend it? Um, they said they wouldn't give legal advice as far as how to handle emergency situations.
Of course.
You know, maybe the thing do is visit with John a little bit on this.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
Would you do that?
Yeah, that'd be all right. I mean, we've already got one department.
Well, I, I watch John's.
And I bet you the second department's John thinks it's not a great idea also. Okay.
Safety liability issue, too, you gotta be careful about that.
I wasn't advocating for it to begin with, but I just know that no one had responded back to it.
Well, and I see why they're doing it, they're trying to.
Sure.
But, oh, sure. But I don't think they're, anybody's thought through, some of these departments, it ain't gonna.
They're viewing it that if they save one accident, that that's a win for them. So, that being said.
And maybe we do it with, and with the exception of those on emergency calls.
And they're not charged solving emergencies, they're charged solving accidents.
You know, I, I get on my cell phone a lot on county business and I'm in the car. I've got hands-free, which is nice, but.
You're still distracted, though. Have you noticed that?
Oh, definitely. You're still distracted.
Yeah, we do, I'm along, and be like, oh.
Yeah.
You know, yeah.
But I'm not distracted nearly as much as all that gadgetry that they give me on that big screen, you know, all this new, nice touchscreen stuff, and it takes my eyes.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean.
Taking your eyes completely.
That's fine.
I'll visit with John.
Thank you.
Okay, it's eleven o'clock, we'll go ahead and, City of Templeton here for the annexation resolution.
Yes, sir. Rob? Rob Peters, how you doing?
Hi, Rob.
Good to see you.
Hello.
We have a section, could I just stand up here?
You can sit here, you can.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Uh, what we did was, we wanted to just present to you, uh, in accordance with code section, I know you guys love the code, uh, there's a section three sixty-eight, seven, uh, one, B, two. And basically what happens is, and old Gene, you're aware of this, I'm sure, very well, uh, that the city, when we're approached with an application for a voluntary annexation, is supposed to present to you a copy of the application, give you the map, show you what's going on, and ask for your approval. If you disapprove it, you can disapprove it, and if you don't wanna take any action, I suppose you don't have to take any action. But in this particular case, the procedure in the code requires that we have a consultation. So we indicted and invited these gentlemen to join us from the trustees, because they are a jurisdiction which has an application for the annexations also. And when we were talking out in the hall a minute, they said, kinda help, help us understand what's going on, and I'll give you my thumbnail sketch and we're happy to open it up to, to discussion. I think the, when I sent to.
Courtney, did you get those resolutions?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Uh, the, the thought was that on the west, west side of town, we've got what we call the Conklin property, and the Conklin property was handled for a number of years by Art New as the trustee for the Conklin Trust. The city had an option to buy the property. These, uh, the option was exercised, but the city has not annexed the property yet. Uh, there were two parcels. One was kind of an L-shaped parcel that you saw, and then Lot Two is a little square in the left-hand corner of the L, which was a grain bin. So, two things happened. Number one, the city exercised the option and paid the money. However, on the little square lot that you saw there, the grain bin, we were waiting for the deed to that particular piece of property, and we just obtained that rather recently and filed it. So the city now controls the whole parcel on the west side of town. The city filed an application for annexation, and the purpose and intent that my understanding is, is consensus of the, of the council at this point in time, subject to the annexation, is to try to make residential property out of it. Ties into West Ridge, just kinda makes sense on the west side of town. Uh, it's got a weird topography to it, 'cause it kinda falls off to the north, as you know, Gene. So it's gonna take a little creativity, but it's pretty straightforward. Uh, the city utilities are to the south line of it, I, I talked with Mr. Prevek, the city man down there, and we're dealing with a surveyor to actually present you with a plat, but again, in order to formalize a plat, we've got to have the property annexed. So the purpose and intent of the first resolution that we presented to you was simply to annex this property for the voluntary annexation of the city, uh, subject to your approval, so that we can develop a plat and try to create more tax base. This is a good thing. Uh, it won't be, uh, we don't know exactly how that's gonna work yet, but it's like anything else in a lot of things you do, we're kind of a work in progress. So that's sort of that one. I don't know how you wanna handle this, if you want me to go on to the second one, I can go on to the second one, too. It's about as straightforward. On the east side of town, Templeton Rye.
Hold on.
Sure.
What about that property to the north that that house got moved on? Is that not getting annexed at this time?
That's.
I thought that was already.
Yeah, that's in there already.
I think it's already annexed.
Oh, is it? That whole pieces?
Yeah. It was, it was weird. We're, we're trying to clean it up, and it's sort of like we're doing on the east side of town, too, we're trying to clean up, uh, the little additional property. I, I, I can't remember the name of that young man that bought that house.
Justin Silverberg.
Justin Silverberg. I believe that's annexed at the time, uh, because we dealt with that issue early on. I, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but I think it's annexed already.
Yes.
This, the purpose of this is simply to annex the property that the Conklins had proposed and an option to the city, that the city exercised, and the deeds are now exchanged. The city controls it, and the city has made the voluntary application for annexation. Any other questions about that? Okay, then on the east side of town, gosh, you're so much more familiar with this than I am.
That's this, right?
This is, exactly, exactly. There's probably a map here that I've got that shows a little, in a little bit different form, and I'll pass this around. I asked the surveyor that was doing the plat, I think he presented the Plumary plat to you already, to help me understand the property that we're actually annexing. I think you're supposed to attach it to the map, good, my paralegal's very good. But this is the little parcel of ground, there are about twenty acres involved, east five acres is squaring off what I believe is what TADC had been very successful in developing is sort of a commercial industrial complex. This is simply a little sliver of ground on the east side that squares it off, and it's necessary because right now it's ag land. Uh, we don't have a, a final plat that's been submitted, so we're not sure how they're going to develop it. Uh, but at this point in time, uh, we would like to have the annex, annexation approved with your approval, because it will afford us the opportunity to just square it off. Then, uh, two things happened, uh, the, the landowners got their money, uh, because a Plumary plat could be filed, and also the Templeton Rye people could feel secure that they've controlled the land. Now, in orderly process, the procedure allows us to simply annex the ground and get a final plat, uh, so that we can have that submitted to you along with the city and appropriately contribute to the tax base. We like, we like to contribute to the tax base, houses and roofs are good. That's maybe an oversimplification, but if anybody's got any questions, that's about as simple as it is on the east side, too. Again, a voluntary annexation that was filed, I didn't add to, by the spores, and the spores, as I've understood it, last Friday had translate, had transferred the property, or at least they had transacted some kind of a closing. I'm not privy to that, other than one of the attorneys is telling me they got it done. Cool.
Rob, does the City of Templeton exercise a two-mile limit?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just that quarter mile.
And that's why this is to us?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Uh, I, I suppose there's some merits to that, but the orderly development's been good. I think they've got a very active group, a very competent group in Templeton, I'm, I enjoy working with them. So, uh, there are two proposals that are for you for resolutions. One would be for the west side, which was the first one, I spoke to you about it, we called the Conklin, uh, city property, and then there's a, a second proposal that is, I think, dealing with what we called the Templeton Rye, uh, property.
Hard guy.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution, unless there's further.
We were discussing it in the hall.
And that's why I turned around to you, but.
I was wondering, we only got a copy of the one, but there's two different pages.
We just got both of them, yeah.
If there is no further questions, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution in regard to the Conklin City property for annexation.
Can you do both of them at the same time or not?
Probably not.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the Conklin property on the west edge of Templeton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need to do.
We need a resolution.
Danzer?
Yes.
Beardmore?
Yes.
Shetler?
Yes.
Miners?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve the annexation of the Templeton Rye Spirits Park. to approve the annexation of the Templeton Rye Spirits property.
I'll second that motion. Okay, we got a motion and a second, it's a resolution, it's real call.
Danzer?
Epstein.
Beardmore?
Yes.
Shetler?
Yes.
Miners?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Okay.
It's among the board, but we don't have financial interest in it, so I'll fill the vote, yes.
Okay, and Fox and I?
Yes.
Right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Don't be too hard on him.
Rob, how's your girlfriend behaving?
Oh, tell you what, she's got me well under control.
Thanks, guys.
Runs me around the block a lot.
Good to see you, Rob.
Take care. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
That explains that.
The maps I got emailed to me were black.
Well, that's what I got.
So, I had Carl print me this off, because I didn't even know where.
You couldn't tell from the black one?
Yeah, that black, I knew what was going on, but I couldn't tell from that.
No, I'm glad they sent.
Dean, there's two of them in there.
Oh, the second one in there?
For a Conklin and then the other one.
I was looking for it and they must have passed it.
No, you just wouldn't sign it.
Spanned it. Figured it was.
Oh, this is.
That's a hard copy, just keep that on the file.
What's that?
Family.
Well, no, I almost esteemed it because of my, on the board of TADC, but.
Right.
We actually don't have, we're not financially involved, this is going direct.
Right.
So. So, start that, Dean. Because a lot of times we, we get more in the middle of that. Somebody skipped one here.
That's okay.
Oh, Mark Neil. Yeah, you got it.
Okay, what's next, we'll go down to the next item on the agenda. Item number ten is six oh eight North Court Real Estate, uh, request for proposal. Got copies in your packet. Well, Mark Beardmore and I both con, each of us contacted two realtors and got their, uh, information on what they thought they needed to know for our RFP. And then, uh, Mark and I went over looked at the property on Friday and we found it, um, pretty good shape. Carpet, everything cleaned up and looking presentable. Um, we, we have a few questions for the board. And, uh, basically, what the realtors say, I think one of them's here, they, they wanted the square footage, which is actually fourteen hundred ninety-five, what you want for rent, which at least be ten dollars per square foot. And everything else is correct. Oh, and the bathrooms, it's actually, um, one bathroom and then there's two community bathrooms that are connected. There's just a single bathroom. And Mark found a good, uh, we found a good, uh, floor plan hanging on the wall and did that. And then other, um, information from the realtors, uh, they said before they do an RFP or bid on it, they'd like probably to look at the property. What else did they say? And that was about it. How it's divided, who pays utilities, no removal, et cetera. So, I kind of scratched up a rough letter, just an idea, and I think we should put a notice probably in the paper, just asking if any realtors are interested in listing it and also send the ones we know a letter. That way, we won't miss anyone and just, um, something like this. This is pretty rough, uh, dear real estate professional, or something like that. Carol County Board Supervisors Interested in Renting Office Space in Fricky Building Located six oh eight North Court Street, Suite B, Carol Iowa. Space for rent is fourteen hundred ninety-five square feet. And the space includes eight individual offices, one restroom, reception area, two adjacent community restrooms. Off-street parking is available, approximately nine spaces, with an ADA accessible door to the building. We are flexible negotiating the lease, we prefer at least a sixty-month lease at about, I put here, ten dollars per square foot or fourteen ninety-five a month. We also discussed utilities. Previously, the utilities had been prorated by square footage between the occupants, Suite A and Suite B, which... So, that's one option. And then the tenant probably would not know what their utilities would be, but we could either tell them, here's the rent, and we'll prorate the utilities according square feet. Uh, the other option is, is just, uh, reflect what we think the utilities cost would be per month and have that reflect, or have that reflected in the asking price for the rent. So, either raise the rent and make it utility-free or have it prorated. Kind of looking to the board for some directions in that. Other things, uh, tell them that the snow removal is included, we can attach this floor plan. And we're basically asking for a proposal from their firm to market the space. Ask them to inform us how they would advertise and what their fee would be. Tell them the space is available for inspection, the key can be obtained from Courtney during normal office hours. And then, we should have a time by which we want their proposal, submit it to us.
That's not right, though. Wouldn't that be fourteen thousand nine fifty?
Fourteen ninety-five per month.
A dollar per foot.
Okay, all right, yeah. I mean, tenant.
Okay, yeah, yeah. That's what we were trying before.
Yeah.
Is a dollar per foot.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
You were saying tenant, I was looking at it.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, that'd be good.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And again, that wouldn't include the utilities. We'd have to make the decision to either split it out, you know, in a fair and equitable manner, like we did before, or if we would just, you know, get a little bit higher rent and just figure it.
Yeah, I just, I just see that, I thought that.
No.
Should have been a dollar per foot.
Dollar per foot.
Okay, if you want to do it on a monthly basis, uh, what we had written up in our lease, and we do have a sample lease, and I, I suppose our sample lease would be what we had from John here, when we were previously trying to rent it to Plains Area. He had it listed at, um, twelve forty-five per month. So, it'd be about fourteen thousand ninety-five per year.
But you were thinking that that was before we added those last two rooms? See, I thought that was after the last two rooms.
The fourteen ninety-five, I believe, was after we added the last two rooms.
Okay. But we were only asking for twelve forty-five, which would be slightly less than a dollar per foot. Which I think is still certainly acceptable.
The fourteen ninety-five per square foot, or fourteen ninety-five square foot, ten dollars per square foot, was fourteen nine fifty per year, divided by twelve is twelve forty-five per month.
So, they were going ten dollars per square foot for the year.
Per year, yes.
Yeah. But if you're figuring on a monthly basis, it'd be higher than that.
Right. No, that was, uh, that's, you can do it either way.
That's fine, let's leave it up to you.
And, um, in the lease, it'll be, uh, twelve forty-five per month is what it's going to zero down to. Work out to. So, I, I guess, uh, well, Mark, anything else, Dad, we were working on this together.
Yeah, I, uh, we, we, in the due diligence we did, speaking to a couple of realtors, you know, one of them had suggested you just do it in a cooperative fashion, that you could just, you know, rather than asking for them, how would you charge us to do this? You could just say, essentially, put up a bounty, so to speak, and then just say, the successful Realtor who brings us a acceptable lease will be paid this amount. And Neil and I talked a little bit more about it Friday. We thought we'd just float it with the board to see, you know, which proposal you thought was best. After thinking about it over the weekend, I'm certainly leaning more towards the latter, where we just say, here's how much we'll pay if you bring us. But, but I'm certainly flexible if it's not the board's. I don't want to make this divisive at all. I just want to get it marketed.
I think that sounds good. Give everybody a shot at it.
Yeah.
Well, another option we could take, here's my concern about that one, and we can do it either way. If we say, well, everybody, y'all work on this together, whoever rents it out gets the first month's rent or something like that, or whatever they do, um, that would work out, but who's going to advertise it? Whereas if we have it with a single Realtor, I think there's a better chance that Realtor to put it in their ad in the paper and take the initiative. And also, we would want to request that it be, or suggest, that it be a multi-listing, you know, that, that's what most, most of the houses in town are, um, what they call multiple listings. So, any Realtor can sell any house, but the guy who lists it and the guy that sells it gets, they share the commission. And I would assume this way that this, the, the firm that handles it would get half a month's rent if another Realtor rents it out in full month's rent, if they rent it out or something like that. So, maybe it's not a big issue, but I'm just thinking that if we tell everybody to do it, nobody's going to specifically put this in their ad, they'll hope everybody else does. And maybe they all would, I don't know.
And Neil, just to be clear, when I, when I asked the Realtor who suggested that, that very question, he said, none of us will. He goes, there's not enough meat in it for us. Not enough meat on the bone. That, he said, none of us will. Now, they all have space. Now, whether or not someone would choose just to dedicate a little bit of space in there, I mean, they're, they're running a half-page or full-page ad anyway. If they choose to do it, that would be certainly on their own accord. But he, he claimed, but, you know, he was making a rather global statement when he said that.
True.
And he just said, he just said, none of us will. I'd like to make it certainly worth your while. I mean, right now, it's empty. I mean, I would be willing to dangle a fairly fat carrot in order for somebody to bring me an acceptable lease to it, who knew?
Well, I think, wasn't it brought up one month's rent? So, are you thinking more than that?
I'm thinking perhaps two.
Okay.
Well, I think the realtors can tell us what they would do it. And if we got a Realtor who would do it for a month's rent and advertised it versus one that wants two months, that's, we go with the better deal we can get.
Let's do it that way. Let, let's see, let's see if we get any respondents from doing it that way, and if not, we.
I think the important thing, no matter how we do this, is we need to get some exposure. We have no exposure now.
Right.
Anybody who's looking for a place like that to rent doesn't know about it. And they call realtors when they want a place, for somehow we have to get this in the hands of realtors. Courtney had a couple ads in the paper, but they just, that was kind of hitting this thing.
Do people come down, look for places to rent?
They didn't say the places, should we let them know too?
They call realtors.
Because they get asked for some place to rent.
Who's this? The Chamber.
Yes. They have a website there where they post places.
Well, they, they keep track of that. They, they may not post it, but at least they got a listing. And I say, well, here's what we got, here's what we know that's, yeah, please.
They do post commercial property for free.
Yeah.
So, let's try it that way. Let's just, you know, I think we've got enough language that we're all in agreement with. And then just say, respond back by such and such date. Yeah. Our only challenge is going to be, is, you know, to send it out to every qualified Realtor in Carol County. And what would we do? Use a Yellow Page or use Google and just hope for the best?
You could use that website, that, because they all have to be a licensed Realtor or whatever. If there's a place online, you can go and see who's technically licensed.
Okay.
Yeah, I would send one to each firm as opposed to each Realtor.
Correct.
I agree.
Yeah.
Because it would get kind of pricey.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. And you might have an independent that's not listed or something like that, but that's, you know, we're doing our best we can. All right, with that, Courtney?
I don't think there'd be a lot of cost to putting it in the paper either.
Okay.
I put Courtney down for the contact person, if there's any questions. But it could be anybody, I just want to make sure that all the questions went to one person. You know, because if one guy calls Dean, one calls Marty, and one calls Mark, uh, we all get together to, we need a central point of court.
Yeah.
Are you going to have anything in there, the letter about the utilities? Or is that something that'll get decided when you look on the lease?
I like, I think the realtors are going to want to know that now.
Definitely.
We should decide that today. That's one of the things they said, is how do you handle utilities? So, I think today we should decide whether we want to, um, ask our tenant to prorate the utilities or if we're going to adjust the rent and have the, uh, utilities included.
Is, is prorating a fair way? I mean, I don't know the building that well.
It definitely was, we, we never had.
Have an idea of what they were paying. You know, I could go back and look. The only thing I question is, if you put it in the rent, they may not be paying exactly the right amount. Because, you know, you're estimating what the costs are going to be.
We never had any complaint from the former tenant about utilities.
You know, it's good for them, they can kind of budget accordingly. They have, I think we had them reimburse us every quarter. We just sent them a statement of what they owe for the utilities.
I did not contact John concerning this. Did you, Mark?
No, I didn't.
No, it might have been a good idea too, but, uh, I didn't, just thought I'd throw it out there.
You have a pretty good track record as far as, of course, I'm sure you would, as far as the utilities.
Well, we split them out now anyway.
Oh, you split them out now anyway? So, they're only paying?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So, like, case management and the, like, VA and those departments that are over there, they're not paying the whole amount.
Right.
They're only paying their percentage. The other comes out of the courthouse budget.
Okay.
So, we've, we've split it ever since I've been employed here.
All right.
So, if that's, if that's the way the board wants to do it, we could just say, um, leave the rent where it is or the, and say that the utilities would be prorated with Suite A or whatever.
Yes.
Why, you have Suite A and upstairs do, right?
On some.
Yeah, they're separate on.
I think electric.
Yeah, I think electric. That's the master, if you want to use that for copies.
I think that's all. Is there anything else on this that we'd suggest that, uh? Do you want me to rewrite this, or do you want to take this and run?
I can take it and run.
There's nothing else, we'll go down to the next item. Fiscal sixteen health insurance rates, and that's in the packet also.
I had just asked Courtney last week that, you know, we had made the, uh, I think it's been customary for the board to approve the final rates. And I, I didn't see where we've done that yet. We approved making the switch over to a third party, but I didn't see anywhere where we had approved final rates. So, Courtney put these final rates together at the end of June, but I just, and, and we haven't done payroll yet, so I just thought it would be appropriate for us to approve the final rates.
How did we turn out compared to a year ago?
They were from a year ago, but they went down from what Wilmark's original proposal was.
So, we're down from last year then?
No.
No, we're still up yet?
We're up a little, not, not as much as we would have been if we would have stayed.
Okay.
I, I, I think.
And I can look and see what the percent, I can look and see what their percentage is.
I'd look, I'd check.
So, with that, I'd make that in the form of a motion to approve the final rates for fiscal year sixteen health insurance.
Got a motion in a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion in a second to approve the fiscal sixteen health insurance rates for the employees for Carol County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sense. Okay, next item, we're down to approve Class C liquor license out of Service Sunday Sales for Carol Country Club.
So, move. Second that.
I haven't heard of any problems with her. Motion in a second to approve Class C liquor license for Carol Country Club. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
I need to stamp on that.
Yes. Okay. Yes. If you hear anything, Sarah. Regarding staying on? No. And there was some emails switched, but, you know, back and forth about it, but, and it was on the agenda.
What was that?
Well, someone requested off of the ambulance board, and then she didn't follow up on it.
Okay, with that-
I guess she's still on?
That will go down to manure management plans. We have two of those here today. One is in Section fifteen of Washington Township for Steve Mace, and that one, there's no changes. And then the other, the second one today is in Section twenty-seven of Roselle Township, and that was for E.V. pork, and there's no changes on that one either. So it's down to Courtney. Okay, with that, regarding the conference call, I think we followed up with him a few times. I think I'm just going to try to get a written proposal from him and be done.
Um, I did, Jason from the comp center called and wanted to know what that was about. He said his only concern is, what are they going to do, and is it going to cause any interference with any of the other-
Yeah, and that I don't always basically-
Yeah, and that's what I said. It's kind of just a initial consultation with them, so.
Yeah, I think I will follow up with him. I followed up with him last week, I followed up with him Friday, I called him again this morning, checking fifty pound fruit scum.
Let's say, let him do the work now.
Yeah, that's what I would say, I'd try to get a written proposal from him and go from there, and we'll, if I get anything done there, I'll just catch with you this week, and we'll try it again next week. This guy might be a charm. Other than that, we'll go to committee reports. Start it off, Neil.
Okay, a couple committee reports. Well, first was, Friday, Mark and I went over the Fricki Building and looked at that, but I think we've been over that already. So Thursday evening, had a policy council meeting, which Marty and Dean were also at. So I'll just cover briefly. We have the executive director's report. Couple things I'll point out of that. There's a Central Iowa cog they're talking about. Apparently, there are seven counties in Iowa that are not represented by any cog, and Region twelve is taking a look at that. They don't know if they can help out, be part of it, have them join us, or whatever, but they're keeping an eye on that. They also talked about their Dennison loan, that they loaned a million dollars at six percent to a housing development, and Dennison comes up to about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per unit. And they also have a house for sale, and Jefferson is a house that they loaned on, it's on the market for forty-five thousand dollars, and has been rehabilitated. So anybody needs a house in Jefferson, there's, that one should sell. Then Tom Feldman gave the transit report. Basically, his figures weren't final yet, but it looks like the revenue from mileage is going to be up about fifteen percent from last year. They have quite a bit of more payments from Medicaid, and job core services are both up about fifty percent over last year. They noted that their service charge, it actually cost them a dollar forty per loaded mile in the county, that's per loaded mile. Then, quite a bit of time was spent on our Region twelve transportation plan, transportation improvement plan. There are several elements to the transportation plan, involves the bridge component, the other component, the service transportation, STP, et cetera, et cetera. And I can pass this around, it lists how much money each county got, and for which projects. I had done a separate rundown on Carroll, and we're, we're doing pretty good as far as getting our share in most cases. They have the workforce director report, and Sherry Vaughn had got a major award as a business marketing specialist at the Iowa Works, and was named the two thousand and fifteen community supporter of the year. So that was quite a distinction for him, for her, excuse me. For the housing development, that's going to, that is all changing now. Lori Gilbert officially retired last week, so she is finished. And Chris Whitaker went over the local assistance report, and there's just list and list of the different housing, CDBG, and other assistance programs that they're working with. And they have passed out a funded projects list, and also a housing investment list. It's kind of interesting, it told how much they'd invested in housing in each county. Carroll is the largest by far, with six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Next was Guthrie County with three hundred and ninety thousand, then Autumn with three hundred and thirty, Green with one forty, Crawford about the same, Dallas seventy-nine, and SAC County sixty-three thousand. And we fared very well, however, per capita, actually, Autumn and Guthrie probably did better, they don't have near the population they did. So, well, that's kind of it in a nutshell, but maybe, I'm sure Dean and Marty want to add other things.
Okay.
That's my committee reports.
Thanks, Neil. Neil?
Tuesday, CADC, basically, we spent most of the meeting on, the Chamber of CADC is developing a new website, and they're in the, in the middle of that, so they went through and showed some of the things that they're looking at, and how we're changing and stuff, so we kind of took up that meeting. Then on Thursday, I had a orientation meeting at three o'clock for two new board members that we went through and or, give orientation for the board of new opportunities, and one of them is from Dallas, and the other's from SAC, and, yeah. Then at four o'clock, we had a board meeting. We did approve those two board members to the board. We accepted the financials, for everything's going very well out there. Head start, we just give them, went through the forms and stuff, because we did not have a policy council meeting since the last time we had a board meeting, and everything's good there. We, we're down on some children, and that, of course, that's typical when you get towards the end of the year. We have thirty days to fill in, except for when it gets to the end of the year, we don't have to do that. We did approve a community service block grant, which, and also the final review, and that was for two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And that's the fund that we use to fill in a lot of gaps throughout the whole system, so. We did go through some organizational standards, went through a risk assessment report, and there was how, how we assess ourselves, the board, and the director, and things like that. We reviewed our mission and vision statements. We looked at the bylaws, which we had the attorney go through, and there was no changes on that. One thing we did approve was a succession plan of the policy, in case something would happen, chat, or something like that, who falls in place, or if he's going to be gone in a few days, and let's say, or if you get in a car accident, he's out of commission or he gets killed, they would fall upon the board chair, and then they have to go through and then get it, get it from the CEO, and then from there on. So it spells that all out. We did also review our agency's strategic plan, and reviewed that and get from more input and final approval. We did go through the procedure for, of election of low-income board members, and remember that board's made up of three, three ways, out of low-income, private sector, and then the public officials. So there's some things that are coming down from the feds, how we can't discriminate on different board members, so we had to put them into the thing. We did approve the United Way of Central Iowa, this is for Dallas County, a contract for Four Corners Financial Education, which is our, we do a program for financial literacy. We got twenty-five thousand dollars from them for that. And then also for, also with the United Way, we did get a, approved a contract for development centers down in Dallas County, they also support that with twelve thousand, six hundred Basically, then we reviewed some correspondence that we had on some, several of the reviews we've had. We had a review from the, on the Head Start. There, we actually had three of them going on, we haven't gotten the one back, but we got the one that's on regard to Hersha, which is, oh. I ain't going to tell you what it means, but I'll tell you, my plain lay was, it sets the rules and guidelines for, apt, for them to be eligible to apply for Head Start. That's what it is. So we did approve that, and we got, or we did get a very good response letter on that. They did a review with us, and that data, no findings, no whatsoever. We also had an audit report on CACFP, that came back very well. So we had a lot of good low-income housing, energy assistance, had a monitoring visit that came back very positive, so that was our meeting there. And besides that, I drove up to the M sixty-four asphalt project one day. That's my week.
Thanks, Neil. Neil?
Well, I, I went to the Council of Governments Policy Meeting as well, and there was just a couple things. Neil covered it very well. There was one thing that I found interesting, actually, this was my first meeting, and for some reason, I missed the April one, but, was the funded projects list. It was interesting that in two thousand and fourteen, the total project dollars were fourteen million, three twenty-six, and for FY fifteen, it was three million, almost eleven million dollars less, simply because I think it contributed that to no street or sewer projects through any of the cities in the, in the region. And also, you know, I kind of missed this, and Marty, maybe you can help me or Neil, did they mention something about the cost of, they were going to not start charging for grants and that type of thing? They hadn't, they hadn't charged, do I have that right? I thought that was an interesting note, that, did you get that as, out of there as well? You know, I mean, as dollars, as dollars are not available, I mean, they have to start charging for-
Well, they depend on what grant you see.
Yeah.
Some of the block grants, they, they got an administration fee, it's about two and a half percent administration fee. But Rick kind of covered that a little bit.
Yeah.
And he talked a little bit about the environmental reviews, those would be about twenty-five hundred dollars to do one of those, and that'd be for basic commercial. And then the housing, the free application, he was talking a little bit about that, would be like a two hundred and fifty dollar fee, is what he had stated on Thursday night, so that's kind of what it was.
They hadn't been charging for those before.
Yeah, like Gene said, there was an administration fee, but from here on, how is funding being done? That's what they're kind of looking at going forward.
Right. I thought that was an interesting comment. Then on Monday night, I had the conservation board meeting down in Manning, down at the Great Western Park. They talked about the new blind dedication from the Tealent family out in Swan Lake. It's kind of a nice little deal out there. Coon Rapids campground expansion's underway, but not going fast enough, simply because of the wet conditions. They're going to, they discussed the bass length increasing from sixteen to eighteen inches in Swan Lake. They feel that there's too many of the smaller bass coming out, so hopefully, if they raised it, they would be more conscious of what they're actually removing from the lake. There were some drainage issues, and I don't think, I don't know if I mentioned this.
So the length of the bass that you can keep has gone from sixteen to eighteen inches, so it's saying-
Right. I think what they're finding out is that there's some fourteens and going out of there.
Rulers are a little short, huh?
Yeah, some rulers are a little short.
Right.
So maybe they thought that they increased it, maybe that might-
Purtail it.
Purtail it a little bit.
Well, they shrink once they get in the bucket.
Yeah.
Get a lot of water. Load it, haul, haul load of cattle, I can fly, they shrink.
There was some discussion about the drainage issue by pruning oil and damming up there. Jason and the crew went up there on Tuesday, Wednesday, I think it was, and they got it all, figured out what they're going to do there. It's not going to cost very much at all, it sounds like. The city's going to donate it quite a bit, and they're going to put a kiosk, well, it'd be on the west, the south side of the highway, on the east side of the trail, is that it's currently, Toine Manufacturing owns that, and they put up some telephone poles there, some light, just as a barrier for the parking area. And Toines used to use that for their own parking lot, but now they're going to basically contribute, give it to, give the parking to trail riders. The city's going to put up a kiosk there, they're going to put some lights and, and make it a nice area for parking, to encourage parking there for the trail. And that'll be at the city's and personal expenses. There was some talk about the easement for the Whiskey Creek Saloon, and I don't think I'm even going to go there, nothing more, anything different than what we had already discussed. Update on the trail, and I got, there was a, a meeting with the, here we go, there was a meeting Tuesday, Wednesday, with, with the, all stakeholders in the trail as far as JEO and the contractor, and so they had a pre-construction meeting, had a pre-construction meeting this morning for the paving project already, swan, project around Swan Lake, pretty straightforward, no major issues. Contractor is looking at roughly a couple days to grind, and a couple days to reset the cross slope, about ten paving days, and a couple days to finish up the road approaches. He's hoping that the project will go fast. Right now, they are in Manning, trying to get that trail finished. Sounds like start date for this project is the third or fourth week of August, which has moved back about a month. But could be earlier if weather cooperates. Their late start date is September first. So that's the update on that. I have a couple quotes here, they're considering, and this is basically the, they got a more, they got a, here we go, equipment, FY sixteen equipment budget is here, and I've got highlighted here, they've, I don't know if you noticed in the, the more?
Eighty-nine hundred.
Yep, yep. And that's, yeah, that's right here. This, I don't know, let's see, where is it? Oh, here it is. Yeah, from Independent Repair, eighty-nine hundred dollars. So I can pass these around. This is also the Tumon Grant, the Renzi Grant, Renzi Trust, they are applying for grants for updates in the park, so. Other than that, I think that's all I had with the conservation board.
Thanks, Neil. Mark? Monday, Louis and I met once again with Louis Brody, who has asked for a couple of VA members to approach us once again about considering a raise for him. We had good dialogue with him, I mean, we heard him out, and it was roughly an hour-long meeting. I mean, it was roughly an hour-long meeting. I pretty well left it, you know, as far as I was concerned, it was a closed case. But I think Marty might feel just a little bit different about it. And then that evening, I attended the Carroll City Council meeting and the swearing-in of new Carroll Police Chief Brad Burke. And my nominee to be the E-nine-one-one chairman. Although, he doesn't know that yet, but he might find out now. But anyways, I supported Brad in his quest to be chief, and I was kind of glad to be there. Wednesday was the FEMA flood meeting, of which Marty and I attended. And pretty much as Carl had, I'll pass this around to those of you interested in it. Essentially, what they're doing is they're putting initiatives, to make initiatives available for communities for three different areas: mitigation, training, and...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Mitigation, training, and...
Individual assistance program?
Yeah.
Public assistance program.
Mitigation.
Oh, and public assistance.
Yeah, public assistance, which would be, if you're on a flood plain, you'd be eligible for flood insurance at significantly reduced rates. And so what this was, was a measure of outreach to Carroll County. They had someone from Region Twelve there. They had JEO represented. They had, of course, Carl represented. There were some others that were invited to it that didn't attend. And what they asked us to do is just put the word out that if these communities want to participate in the program, they need to know now, pretty much by about the end of fall. Because as Carl mentioned, they're putting in for next year's budget. So the funds wouldn't be available until approximately a year from this fall. But I thought we would float it at our next EMA, E-nine-one-one commission meetings, get some of the fire departments involved. I think we asked a little bit about, you know, some of the training that they have available. Oh, there was also some stream studies available. Yeah, so some, and JEO thought that was a real good idea. Of course, they do them. But they said it would be a good idea to have stream studies done. So I think the next step was, was to try and put together, again, some outreach meetings and maybe through the availability of EMA and E-nine-one-one, and to see if we could get further engagement with that. And Marty might have more to add to it than that. And then, as Neil mentioned, on Friday, he and I walked Sweet Bee and did a little bit of work on this RFP. So that was my week. The only other thing I was gonna add to it is, in your packets, I had Courtney give you a copy of an email from Patrick. The monthly ambulance board meeting was scheduled for tomorrow night. And Patrick had something that come up where he couldn't attend. And they tried to put it for next Tuesday night, the twenty-first, of which I cannot attend that one. And so it looks like they're just going to not have a meeting, which has been done before July gets busy. But anyways, he wanted me to share this information that he was planning to update the ambulance board on. And so I'll let you read that on your own. That was my week.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, as Mark mentioned, we've met with Louis, veterans, and Zane Lander and Bill Meyer were their reps there. And Louis, we kinda went through this field this year in the budget process, and we've made our decision. And I kinda stood by what we made for this year. Down the road, maybe when we get in November, December timeframe, if you wanna put some numbers, he's comparing everything as far as other entities. And I said, if you wanna put some numbers together and bring it for another budget year process in the November, December frame, timeframe, we can look at it then. But at this time, it's, it is what it is. So that's kind of that. And then Wednesday, had the FEMA meeting with Mark also on the flood issues. And it's kinda interesting, cause kind of, you know, they were learning up the training as far as what we kinda went through in the last issue with the FEMA thing. And one of the things I kind of think we need to bring to light also is, you know, we had the storm shelters set up, and they talked with the new opportunity, and we got that set up, that if something does happen again as a storm shelter. But I think we need to kind of pursue it in the issue of some of the small towns around. When we went and had the burn pile set up for all these small towns, Dan, Neil and I would spend a lot of time doing that. I think it's something we need to visit with those small communities and get something set up prior to, so that we don't have this rush like we did last time. And I think we need to pursue that. So that's kind of one of the inputs that I put in from past experience. Then on Thursday, we had the Region Twelve board meeting. Neil and Dean pretty much covered everything on that. Rick, I guess adding to the executive directors, the dues notices have been mailed out to the county regarding the twenty-eight dues notices. And then as far as Tom's transit report, Neil pretty well covered that. He talked, while he talked a tad to that a little bit. Mike Pratt was out in Mishawaka, Indiana, and received some training on repairing some of the vehicles, on the MV ones that we have. And so we will be getting more of those, so we've got it, so we can access those. So maybe that's...
How's your cell tower doing?
Maybe this is him. Hello? Um, it'd actually be the auditor's office, and she's in a meeting right now. Can I have her give you a call after lunch? Okay, it's seven-nine-two-nine-eight-zero-two, would be that number. Yep. Okay, thank you. And then also had the transit program, and I'll, I can just hand this around. I kinda highlighted some of the things that involve Carroll County, the Tac Committee.
See screening your calls, dude.
Did approve some of the funding for some of the projects in there. And I always pass that around. And then on Friday morning, I met with Tom Feldman from Region Twelve and Pat Gray regarding the mental health issue up at the hospital. And we talked a little bit about how we could fill that out. And basically, with the ambulance, we can't do it through there. We wanna have a separate entity, and they do not have the software that will work with that. So Tom was gonna work with the company that they worked with, is TMS, on their Medicare billing through Region Twelve. He was gonna do some checking on that. The other thing that kind of surfaced in that discussion that morning was maybe the thing to do if, if Region Twelve can have a person there or a driver, is maybe just supplying a car and then maybe having one of the hospital personnel have that available there, that if they would have somebody driving, if they do have the need. So that's something we're gonna kind of put together in the next meeting, and we'll just get set with the hospital, and kind of go from there. Then this morning in the mail, we got this from Howard, Howard and Pat Neres regarding the parking lease. And I'll just give that to Courtney, we can put that on the agenda for next Monday. So that's pretty much everything I have in a nutshell. Courtney?
Well, that's one thing I had, so that handles that. Carl has a note here about the Board of Adjustment meeting on July fourteenth at five-thirty, so...
That's tomorrow night.
Yeah. And you guys might be aware of it. That's just a hard copy of it, so...
And that other meet, yeah. Farm Bureau's at six.
Farm Bureau meeting at six.
What time is that one?
Five-thirty. Where's that at?
Downstairs.
Downstairs.
Meeting.
Well, yeah, I'd like to go with this.
Same here.
Fourteenth?
Yeah.
That's Farm Bureau night.
Yeah, that's what we were just saying. That's at six o'clock, and this is at five-thirty.
Yeah, that's pretty close.
Someone contact the Farm Bureau, and some, a couple supervisors may be a little late, or is that, is that a good thing to do or not?
Oh, I'd say we just, all you can do is observe there if you are there. And sometimes maybe it's be better located for them to make their own decision.
And not show up?
I think, I don't know what your thinks.
I was planning to go.
I was planning to go, too.
But sometimes you intimidate those other boards. And if those two go, maybe we'll, we can explain if they're gonna be a little bit late, what the reasoning is, we can do that when we get to the door in the lane. Well, we get it that way. That way, there's not three of us there.
I'll just go in the Farm Bureau meeting, I think.
Yeah, it's about, pretty much, maybe you two are going.
Just don't let them pull for door prices till we get there.
What's your name?
Okay.
But that way, that way, there's not...
It's in my district, so that's one.
Yeah, no problem with that.
I don't have to go, but I'll stay.
I'll hear me better.
Yeah. Anything else? Great.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion, I said?
All clear. Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.